Good morning, we are going to call the meeting of the Clickcat County Board of County Commissioners to order. We will begin with a department update from our Public Works Director, County Engineer Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Seth Scroll.
Okay, we only have one thing on your consent agenda today, and that's a settlement agreement with Public Works and Chapman Creek LLC for right away along Kelly Road. We're just slowly knocking those out to get all our right away there. And that's it for the consent agenda, no payments, no public hearings.
Right, on the construction end of things, we're still waiting to schedule from the contractor for the white plastic edge lines contract and a break in the weather.
Better get them soon.
Yeah, hopefully we get this done soon. Our air warning signs and guideposts project, the contractors waiting for materials and they're at least five weeks out for the materials to be delivered. Our annual striping contract, we're waiting on one roadway to be striped, that's the portion of Biggleton Highway our crews reconstructed. See small works guard rail, you guys will see that contract bonds next week for approval and execution. On road design, we, the project, Biggleton Highway area paving project is currently on ad, we do need to extend it one more week for the bid opening as there was a snafu with the paper getting it on ad. Sundale Old Highway Eight, right away negotiations continue. We do have that board packet this, for this afternoon for signature for one of those settlement agreements. Bridge repair bundles, we finally got preliminary funding approved, so we'll move forward and getting consultant on board and get that design started. And work continues on other projects coming up for next year.
Okay, on the maintenance side of things, we have East Road cattle pass on the east side, that's what they're doing, get that, so we get East Road back open. Um, what, the west side, they're brushing on Snowden and Glenwood areas and grading roads. Um, upcoming facilities, we still, the graphics in the picnic table. Um, jail roof replacement is, we're just waiting for the flashing and then that'll be done. Uh, Superior Court is finalizing the contracts. Um, which I may have to get with a lease on because even though we went through the process and we signed them, D H A P light may send it back and want some docu sign. If we have the capability. Um, events, we have, uh, we've been asked to have an election informal rally by the Republican Party on the courthouse lawn on October twenty eighth. They paid their fee.
There, there's no electioneering within the eighteen day window of the
Good.
Election within remember if it's hundred or two hundred feet of the my office, of the courthouse.
Right.
So we may just
Doesn't that include Dropbox locations too?
Yes, so we may need to, if you're gonna do it, kind of put it on.
Well, that's what we were thinking, I had talked to the P A, I was gonna come see you next, I wanted to give them the heads up. We've taken the money, but we have not deposited it because I wanted to make sure there was nothing that, that, because I knew there was something to do with having an election rally, it's close to where the election is, but, so I was gonna come see you. So that's good, I'll go, I'll touch base with you again, make sure that we can tell them where they're getting it.
Yeah, cuz I think it's, it's not only her office, but it's the Dropbox across the street too, or on this side. This side, that could be a bigger problem than your office.
Exactly, so it might not be able to be done here on the courthouse, we'll see. Um, that's why we bring it up, we're working on the design for the fuel island and SAD is passed, grounding started on Monday. Commissioning is still scheduled to start on the twenty third. Um, have some other follow-up issues. Uh, we had kinda talked about it before, uh, we're circling back around to the Veterans Officer again. Uh, where we're gonna relocate him. Uh, we kinda, I think we left it kinda hang, everybody's gonna kinda look at options and stuff, I just wanna bring it back up, bring it back up on everybody's plate. Because in around, in December, we'll actually be starting the project. Um, Heather was, I secured the funding for it and we just need to, cuz that won't be his place anymore once we start. And, uh, so we looked at different options, one was to put him in, um, um, economic development in that area where you first walk in the door. And then move the K to B to officer down into, um, I
WSU.
WSU. But I guess I'm looking for, I don't care where we put him, doesn't matter to me, that was what I was suggesting, but if the board would like to see him someplace else, we can put them there.
Um, for me anyway, I would rather see the Veteran Service Officer in the community development, economic development area and then move uh, Lorena, the small business development was, worked for WSU, down to WSU. But that's me. Good news?
How soon do you need this answer?
Uh, I can wait a few more, I could pester you again next week and the week after if you would like.
We may have to make a decision, it may be a while yet.
I mean, I still have time, don't get me wrong, but I just, you know, I don't know what his schedule is, Heather might know, I don't know the Veterans Officer, and I don't like to move people without them being aware of it and without them being here.
We probably have till the end of the month on the WSU process. Uh, the contract will be up, and then they're all coming back from two week vacations. So at WSU, so that'll take a consultation time with them to decide how we move forward.
So I could do it even, you know, in November sometime, that would be fine, I can, I can move them in November, so.
I think we need to be done with WSU by November.
As long as I can get them done before we get, start getting into the holidays around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
You know, the first part of November, I can.
Well, the good news is we have space, it's just figuring out.
It's just where you want.
Okay.
Okay, I will leave it at that. Okay, um, I had
Richard in here yet?
Nope, no Richard, but we'll cover that, I'm gonna circle back around to that real quick. But I just wanted to quickly touch base with the audit, our audit and what came out of it. Um, we had, we had some things with our fuel. Um, but we've been doing fuel the same way for years and years and years, but policies, the state changes the way they look at things. And I would say, you know, we'll put a purchasing management or a policy in place, so, and, um, the only other thing we have to do, and this is gonna be more labor intensive, uh, we'll see with the new system, maybe it can help. Right now, we track the, the mile, or we track each vehicle gets a certain amount of fuel. And we also, they write down mileage, but we do not take the big list and go over it every month or so to make sure that the vehicle mileage per gallon works out, that's labor, it's pretty labor intensive. But we're gonna have to figure out a way to do that, because it was recommended to us to do that. So we will, we'll, we'll, again, take care of that as these things.
Was that a recommendation countywide, by the way? To start recording mileage on our vehicle up?
It was a recommendation to tighten fuel tracking.
Yeah, cuz when they talk to us, um, when we talk to them, their, their question was, well, how do you know that, okay, we know that, that fuel's going into that vehicle. But how do you know somebody isn't filling up a five gallon can while they're filling up the vehicle or, you know, that, because you don't know how much each vehicle's getting per gap per mile.
Would it make more sense to, to create a policy of doing spot checks rather than looking at everything each time?
Yeah, we, that's what I mean, we would do something to that nature, do some sort of a spot check, but again, usually you're gonna have to make sure you get all the vehicles, I don't think the diesel's gonna be as big of an issue for us, because first of all, our diesel's all red. So
Yeah, nobody runs red diesel.
No, nobody's supposed to be running red diesel, so it's mainly, I, it's mainly the unleaded is what I think they're looking at. But yeah, we'll create something, um, you know, when we get the other fuel island, we finally put the one in Golden Dale, that will take care of all that, cuz it's gonna be a card lock system anyway. So it will automatically track all that stuff, but we still have three other fueling areas that are not, and we're not gonna spend the money to put a card lock system on those right now. It's just too expensive to do.
Right, but that was my question on if this is a countywide thing that we need to start putting that kinda stuff on our fleet vehicles and stuff under as well.
Countywide, we don't, most, I think, um, the assessor's office and building and set planning use the, the public works fuel stations. The folks who have, you know, sort of the one-off trip here and there are using that station. So there was, there were some recommendations that impacted other departments. Uh, that they tighten up their policies a little bit, but clearly Public Works consumes more fuel than, you know, than maybe the sheriffs, you know, rivals them, but generally that they're the biggest consumer of fuel, so that, and they operate the fuel tanks, so that's, that's why it was primarily focused on, on that, but yes, there, there is room to tighten up all of the county's usage of fuel, and it might be worth looking into having all of the county rigs, uh, obviously not when you're, you know, out of the county, but in the county fueling up at the public workstation so that there is that tracking.
Yeah, cuz once, like I said, we're working on the new fueling island. Uh, we're in design, uh, the objective is to build it next year, cuz we have no choice, our tanks are past their prime, so. Um, when we do that, then that will be a card lock system and hopefully integrated in with the new system. It, then you'll have all the reporting data, so yes, if the, like Heather said, if the, uh, if everybody's filling up there, they'll come in, they'll have a card lock and that'll all be tracked. Yeah, okay, on the good news side though, it's, uh, usual, we did have the audit on all our federally funded projects and we came through well, cuz we get audited all the time on them, so. And the only other thing I have, and Richard's walked in, so I'm gonna kinda bring it up, um, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, I don't wanna get too damn far down the wrong rabbit hole here. Um, is, we're looking at starting the airport project soon, sounds like Richard's got all the fund, or most of the funding in place. And we would start, we would go out for an R F P for design, for architectural and engineering. Unless the board chooses not to, again, still. Uh, but it won't be for at least another month, and, you know, we would let you know, but I'm just kinda giving you the heads up. We do not have all the funding secure though. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, cuz he's been, E D A wants us to start making progress or gonna pull them off. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, so before, before we reach out and go back to the Investment Review Committee, and, uh, before we, we go back and do all these things, they would like to come out with a with a ninety percent solution from the A and E.
Thank you, I'm not very used to talking into a microphone. Um, so yeah, we're, we're looking at, the U S E D A wants us, before we go back to the Investment Review Committee, the Investment Review Committee is gonna want us to come to a ninety percent solution on what this project is gonna look like. Uh, the worst case scenario is we can still do the hangar, the hangar would take the priority of the two, but it would be located closer to Pacific Coast Cherries on lot fifteen and sixteen over at the airport, so we basically couldn't open up all nine lots for that aviation business park, but um, with the one million dollar car loan that I was about to brief the commissioners on, we've secured four point five million, um, and we're still uh, trying to get another five hundred thousand from the state. So either way, uh, before we go back to the Investment Review Committee, they wanna, they wanna see from the architectural and engineering drawings what the, like, what the actual cost is line by line, I've provided them everything that Jeff has given me in, in that regard. Um, and before we proceed, we have on the original, from August of twenty twenty-two, our original start date for breaking ground was September of twenty twenty-four. Um, that was the original, uh, or the, the modified timeline that was given before they gave us the award letter. Um, and so before we ask for that extension as well, so it's two pieces, we need to have significant progress through the A and E drawings. So hence us having to move forward, and they've given us an email stating that they understand where we have a budget shortfall on this, uh, but they still wanna see the A and E drawings, so. And the A and E drawings are, the, the A and E portion of that is, is, uh, I think we've calculated is, is exactly, it's like approximately four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, but basically five hundred thousand dollars. So is, is how much that would cost.
So it doesn't, the only risk I would see would be, um, you spend the money cuz you'd be using E D A money. And if it came, you know, cuz I can estimate it fairly close, but I don't know until you actually get it and design it. You start doing, you gotta spend money to actually get it, I got a ballpark, pretty comfortable where we'll come in, but we still need to design it, cuz they're not gonna take that, they still wanna see a design. So the only, the risk I would say would be, but it sounds like Richard's done a very good job covering that risk, would be, cuz he's let them know the whole way, we've told them, we may not have the money to build this. The only risk I could see is if you step forward with design, you get E D A money, and then they come back and it's like five million dollars to do the thing. And we say, well, we don't have enough money, E D A says tough, you either do it or you pay us back. That would be the only risk, but I don't think that, I'm not as, not as concerned about that as I used to be, cuz it seems like Richard has a
Well, and I'm, I'm not as concerned about that, it's, I think, if that was the case, uh, an ask to the case Pita Board to recoup said funding would probably be seen, uh, well. So.
Okay, so if, if we're all on board, then we will start looking at proceeding forward then.
We all on board?
With, uh, R F P and getting a consultant to design both.
I think it, it makes sense that the E D A doesn't wanna, uh, commit more dollars when they don't have an engineering design done.
Exactly.
I think if we can, in the long run, we're gonna build this one way or the other, so whether we design it today or we design it five years from now, it's gonna be cheaper to design it today, and if we can get that done through grants, great. Um, and then if it comes in eight million, ten million dollars, who knows, you know, where prices can go between now and then. At least we have something that we can hang our hats on, on the shelf to say this is what it's gonna cost. And then updating those numbers isn't difficult in the future if we can't move forward. And I think the E D A knows that, that that happens from time to time, and especially right now when all their projects are coming in way over budget and they're scraping the bottom of the barrel for the cash, so, um, I'm all in favor of moving forward with engineering and design.
Yeah, it seems psychological stuff.
Okay. Sounds good, I think that's all we have, just to get something different.
All right, um, I will say my little thing, if you'd let me know what's going on with that.
I will do that.
Offline's fine. Uh, the only thing I had that I wanted to bring, I guess I'd say to your attention, the board's attention. Read the proposed road hall agreement from Bluebird. What they submitted.
Yeah, I haven't, I have not finished read, I haven't read it yet, so we'll see how.
One thing that stood out to me, and I don't know that it's, you know, it's not a dead deal anyway, but it's one thing I noticed in there. Um, they have it that they have to do the maintenance, blah, 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 that if they don't do the maintenance, the county will grade it and send them the bill. I wanna, I personally, and it would take a second for you to agree with that before we could do that. I would like to make sure we have wording in there that we can hire somebody else to do the grading and send them the bill. So that we're not draining county resources by maintaining the road that they should be maintaining. Because it might be cheaper for them to not maintain it and just make us do it and submit the bill, than, than having to hire that outside company, so I don't wanna give them that.
Well, they may have, you know, and, and this has been a sticky point with me and them, because it isn't us sending them a bill, I don't want that. I want a letter of credit that we can actually just go get the money. So they're, you know, cuz to send them a bill, who knows where it would end up. So if I bid down that path, because then you get stuck between, it's the contractor's fault, it's developer's fault, I don't care about that, it's the developer's fault. So no, it, it should be, we'll make it clear, but it, it doesn't necessarily have to be county, it can be, when, when they make that reference, it means we can hire, we can do whatever we want. And they pay, but this one has a little bit more different elements to it, because there's also, and again, I have not seen it cuz I was gone, but there's an attachment that goes with it that has what we call a maintenance, or certain levels to where it, it, it gets inspected on a regular basis, instead of me just going out there and saying, well, I, it's bad. You know, I may say it's bad, and you may say, that's not too bad, I'm okay with this. But this way, it's more scientific and it's, it's more straightforward. So yeah, we're still, still pushing through that phase of it.
Okay. Any questions for Public Works?
No.
No, nothing?
Okay.
Continue, tell the red guys you did a great job, I haven't been through a pothole in probably a year and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gentlemen. Thanks, guys.
You wanna call the auditor since she's here, not on the agenda?
Are you here for yourself, or are you here for economic development during their?
Okay.
Uh, so next up, ten thirty is Economic Development Director, Richard Foster. Except, gee, perfect, H R has something. Okay, yep, nope, that's how you have to do it, raise your hand and throw a shoe at me and, and you're in. Um, H R.
Yes, good morning. We, uh, well, we, the Senior Service Department received a resignation for their hybrid position for the van driver slash cook. Um, and so we are looking for verbal to post for that position. Um, it, the funding is there obviously, and, uh, the director realizes that it is a very unique position, but with the van driver not requiring a C D L, she's, uh, wanting to post it as the hybrid position first, and then if that doesn't work, then we'll separate them later.
How soon are they leaving?
Uh, two weeks.
Yeah.
But they're on vacation for that two weeks. So.
That sounds pretty common.
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes, and.
Please do, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for, uh, barging in there because I don't look good enough, so good job on that.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
So I'll let Chelsea take it away with, with the, with some of this stuff.
Morning. Um, Casey Peta, our next board meeting is coming up on October twenty-fourth. Infrastructure, I was able to attend, uh, the Community Revitalization Town Hall Meeting in the Dalles in, uh, September twelfth and got to hear from four or five different brownfield projects that have been funded and are seeing success, so that's kinda um, fun for me tying into the Clickcat Mill site. Um, which we were just awarded the, um, Toxic's Clean, Toxic's Cleanup Integrated Planning Grant last week, and we will be working closely with the Department of Ecology to implement testing and uh, land reuse planning, that was a two hundred thousand dollar grant, um, and we'll also be applying to the E P A Brownfield Assessment um, monies, which is another two hundred thousand dollar grant, once the application is available on the, um, with M C E D. Um, the Regional Innovation Hub, that's with the Department of Commerce and the I C A P program, which is Innovative Cluster Accelerator Program. Um, we just had a meeting last week and we will be following up an in-person meeting November second in White Salmon. And we're gonna be looking for, uh, more partners with, uh, within the industry, the U A V industry. Um, the core team, um, that we're a part of, that was the one million dollar ask from the E P A to do the brownfield assessment work. Um, that is through M C E D and, and they're representing the five county region, three counties in Oregon and two counties in Washington. Um, again, that's the one million dollars for brownfield, and they're gonna be getting their applications up on their website in October sometime, so we're looking for that soon. Um, the Mid Columbia Economic Resiliency Team, um, is gonna have a follow-up meeting on this Thursday at nine. Um, Business Extension and Expansion, um, in situ layoffs, we have heard reports that approximately two hundred employees were dismissed. Specific numbers, departments, or reasoning cannot be verified at this time, but we are monitoring the situation with M C E D and the South Central Workforce Development Council. Um, City Engagement with Benjen, we are still working closely in regards to their economic development plan. Um, and they're pursuing through car, or curb, sorry. Additionally, we are beginning, um, they are beginning their work on the, uh, the county had approved for them with a point oh nine dollars, which includes the water expansion project. Um, we assisted both Benjen and the City of White Salmon, um, applying for the Middle Housing Planning Grant through Commerce. And that funding, uh, supports plan amendments and development regulation amendments to, um, the city plans. Um, if awarded, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards their planning amendments. Um, the Centerville Grains will be applying for community development funds through Casey Peta to update their restrooms, specifically the flooring and vanities and interior roof tiles in the main ballroom, and that'll be an estimated ask of about five thousand dollars. Um, the Chamber and Pub Box, um, we are in contact with Commerce on when they want to do the two events with our chambers for chat, G P T, and agricultural topics, and we're hoping to get that scheduled in December or January. And broadband, we are continuing to follow, and the Department of Commerce and Washington State Broadband Office monthly updates and working with M C E D and our local I S Ps to formulate a deployment plan, once the funding becomes available. We are also having conversations with Kevin Waters from Skamania County, um, as well as Jason from M C E D with discussing an option of contracting with the firm to be the point person for deployment and grant funding, um, just to keep it centralized and organized. Um, internships, I was able to meet with a youth specialist, youth service specialist who works with the E S D um, one twelve yes program, and we're gonna be working together to connect local businesses with, um, youth, which is sixteen to twenty-one. Um, seeking paid internships, the program pays the wages for the intern, which takes the burden off the employer. They are a forty to a hundred and twenty hour, um, internships, minimum wage, and they get to go into their chosen field to get experience.
Does the county qualify?
County qualify for.
To have interns?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. You guys have any questions?
Does middle housing apply only to cities?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and those, and the middle housing is two seventy-five thousand dollar grants that they're pursuing.
Yes.
So altogether, it's a hundred and fifty thousand in, in planning amendments and stuff. So in, in regards to the, and sit to with the two hundred employees, that's a, I mean, that's, that's a considerable amount, in fact, one of them was, uh, well, I won't say specifics, but, um, previously, the, the ways the South Central Workforce Development Council had assisted with, with large disturbances like this was as an example, when we had the Underwood Fruit Fire, uh, uh, that burnt down the, the factory and everything like that, there was about a hundred and three jobs that were at risk, um, down there, um, at, at the fruit factories, and we were able to save ninety-eight of them, they shifted them into night shift, five of them couldn't couldn't switch over into a night shift, um, and so they end up losing their position, and of the five that did, um, they were able to, to get engaged with the South Central Workforce Development Council and understand, you know, how to get their unemployment benefits, how to just go, you know, navigate through the whole system, um, that is the Employment Security Department. Um, and so the idea for us is with these two hundred, it is, is very difficult. In, in previous years, when we've had disturbances like this that affected our smaller U A V companies, we've been able to engage in the work share program, I know Institute's, uh, familiar with the work share program, and they still went with the, with the large layout, but trying to, trying to really engage those employees that have been impacted, uh, especially the Washingtonians that are down there, um, is, we're we're, we're still working on that, like, almost on a day-to-day, day-to-day basis, trying to figure out how, how we can engage those folks. So that, that's kind of our piece of the pie, so. Um, moving forward, we have, uh, Keaton, Keen's our new economic development specialist.
Just kinda slide that mic in between the two of you and we're good.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, Keen just started here, uh.
Congratulations, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, last, uh, last week, he's from Texas.
What was the hollering from the peanut gallery back there? Casey did it? I thought so.
Yeah, so he's from Texas, so he's, uh, he he's been in Peru while here in Goldendale. He was just down the street. He's already moved in and and, uh, uh, already making a lot of positive impact.
Texas just played a football game against Oklahoma.
Texas A and M.
Okay.
Which, yeah, didn't go well for for either.
Okay, A and M, I'll give you, I'm okay with that.
Um, and so he he's already, uh, attended one of our SEEK meetings. And Skamania County EDC brought it up to me once more, uh, with Cindy and and, uh, and and Kevin Waters. And they're requesting that Keaton sit on the board for SEEK. So they are looking for for you for younger blood. I don't know if we can get any much younger than Keaton. But, uh, I would want to know, I know in the past they've asked me to do it, if they've asked again with Chelsea. And and we said no each time, but I I gotta, they're they're asking once again, so I'm bringing up to the commissioners that that that's okay.
I don't have a problem with it, but if it goes forward and you have consensus from the board, I would also mention to them that. We will, uh, do it while we have the capacity to do it. And we'll try it out, kind of scenario. That's my opinion.
How intense is the board? How much?
Uh.
Once a month?
Yeah, it's it's once a month. They they meet for a couple hours, ten to noon, on on the first or second Monday of each month.
Yeah.
So.
It's good to create partners.
Yeah, and you can always zoom in if you're not able to attend in person.
Okay, perfect. Yeah.
Okay, so we got our answer. Congratulations, Keen.
Congratulations. Your first board.
Yeah, sorry. Barely not even gotten his first paycheck and, uh, bottomed out to different boards. Um, so we, uh, so great news, uh, we got the million dollar car loan. Um, so that's great news for us. We ended getting the full twenty percent of the state's budget for the airport, for that USEDA project. Uh, bad news, I'll admit the mistake. I did not realize we had a finance committee where I had to. Push everything through, so, yeah, so I had to get the approval. We do have a resolution that's on standby for the, uh, for all three of you to take a look at. Uh, basically what that says is that we have to, uh, put in like, uh, like basically its own budget or account. Uh, to in order to receive this million dollars so that we can move forward with it. Um, we got the thirty day extension already. Um, that being said, I I also wanted to make sure that the Commissioners were aware. Um, Senator King, I have a meeting with him on Monday. So this is, this is in regards to that direct state budget allocation request, so he's going to be giving me a call on Monday. Um, I have not heard back from our local representatives, but I do know that, uh, on October twenty-sixth. Representative Chris Corey is going to be coming through Goldendale on a coffee break, so that was when I was going to go with Costin over at the American Legion, uh, if that's okay. Um, and then, uh, for the housing, uh, we've successfully submitted our Affordable Housing Report to the Legislature. Um, and we're going to continue to work with the program manager, um, that that's involved with the housing funds. And and just letting them know like how we're trying to create this, basically the system on how to expend those funds, and that's. That goes back to the sales and use tax, um, that that started in twenty twenty-one. That's not related to the documented. Filing fees is just for the sales and use tax portion. Um, currently within the budget, we have approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in there. Uh, and so after just two years, it it climbs up a bit higher or more quickly than the documented filing fees. But just want to make sure all three county commissioners are tracking on that, so. Um, just however we create that system, I know that that like that's all in the air. They just want to be informed of that, so if. When we start going through audits and stuff like that, that they're tracking. Um. Grant Rider Program. I know that this is something we've been following since like May. Uh, so Commerce has just gone out with the Grant Rider Program, uh, Manager. They're going to be based in Olympia. Uh, we thought that we were going to get a local grant rider, if if, uh. We all recall, uh, but it looks like there is going to be more of a, at least with the program manager, they're going to be Olympia. Um, and if it it looks like they're not going to have enough money to have, like each county's got its own grant rider or each community, so it's going to be more of a. It looks like it's. Delving more into like a regional basis. Type situation. So whether or not we're like, you know, maybe they give us one first comedian, click attack, I suspect they'll have somebody in Yakima. Which means. We got to fight hard, uh, to get some sort of attention from yet, from the Yakima folks. But that that's what that's kind of moving into, so with the Grant Rider Program. Um, also, another important thing from the Department of Commerce. Um, and and I figured that our county commissioners would be very interested in this. Um, they're doing a request for proposals for a company to do a clean energy citing. And permitting evaluation report. This is going to be statewide. They're looking at all the different. Uh, areas within the state, and so they're going to come out with a big report on that. Um, they go out for the RFP November first. I did sit in on their, just they they just had a, uh, Q and A session. I just sat in, I just sat in on it, um, just to kind of see what it was about. Um, and so, uh, once, that's going to probably take about a year to do, but once that comes out, I'll continue to monitor that. And once that report comes out, I'll make sure to forward that on to all three of you so that you guys could take a look at it, um, and and see kind of. Hopefully it gives us some insight on on kind of how other other folks do it across the state, if that makes sense.
So is it based more from a federal view?
State view.
It'll be a state view again.
Yeah, so I don't know, like, from an FSEC perspective, or like, I I have no idea what the company's going to come out with.
Okay, I was just meaning more, well, they lean towards wrapping in federal regulation. That we haven't looked at with.
I don't think so. I think it's going to be stating that.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, because it's.
Makes me feel they're trying to create some EOZ statewide kind of a scenario.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's looking and and, but I figured with our local projects and everything, why our commission would probably be interested in that. So just giving you kind of some updates on that. And with the, uh, continue on with with renewable energy. Uh, the next meeting for CG Breeze is going to be on November seventeenth. That's something that Maked does. Uh, CG Breeze stands for Columbia Gorge Bi-State Renewable Energy Zone. Um, it's something that was created, um, many years ago, something we still participate in. Um, again, the meeting on that's November seventeenth. We'll continue to engage with that with with Maked, just wanted to make sure Commissioners are tracking that. That I'm attending this stuff, or one of us. Um, business recruitment opportunities, we do have two business recruitment opportunities. One is a type of recycling company. Um, and so we're looking at trying to set up a. A type of tour out there at the landfill, uh, forum, and then we have another one that's that that's going to be coming here in the next couple of weeks, uh, here in Goldendale. Um, and that's. Literally all the information I got, and so one once I find out more, I'll make sure to, uh, send that up the chain of command, so to speak, but. Uh, so those are our two business, uh, recruitment opportunities. Um, trips. So recently, we did the, uh, I went to the ADO Conference over in Spokane, Washington. That is mandated by the ADO contract. We have to, we have to attend these, these conferences twice a year, um, for per the ADO, Associated Development Organization. The one that we have coming up is the IACC Conference. This one is October twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. Um, the IACC Conference is like the, oh man, just off the top of my head, I should probably probably put it down, the Infrastructure Systems Coordinating Council. Is off the top of my head, that that's what it is, but basically this conference has got all the different federal and state regulatory bodies that do grants. And grant loan programs for local municipalities. Um, and it they go from, uh, like the business side of things to public-private partnerships, water systems, wastewater systems. Great type stuff. Uh, in years past, I've seen, uh, representatives from our local ClickTap PD and and our local cities attend some of those. Out of all the conferences and things that we do, I would say that from an from an information standpoint, this is one of our most. Important things that we do, and not just from an information perspective, but it allows the county. To begin to network and create those good relationships with these program managers, so if if the county or a a junior taxing jurisdiction. Decides to move forward with a like a CDBG grant or something like that, this allows us to already have that that, uh. More personal acquaintance with that program manager and and be able to kind of agree so this gives better as we apply for those grants. So this next one that's coming up, I was going to have both of these two attended. Again, October twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, which means they're not going to be at the KC PETA Board. It'll just be me and and Lynn that that are going to be rocking it for this upcoming October, but I want to make sure Commissioners were good with that. Um, and then the last but not least, and and it's something that's just that that's just out there. And it's something that I have been engaged a little bit with in the past. So we have a meeting coming up this next week. I know that, um, Rob has has mentioned it last week, and that's with the Swisser Project. Um, just want to make sure Commissioners were were tracking on that. I'll be attending that meeting this upcoming Friday. So that's going to be at eleven AM, but. And then and then that's about it, so any any other questions or or concerns? Oh, one last thing, and I forgot to put it on here. Uh, point oh nine dollars. Um, the Porta Click Attack, um, is going to be presenting their point oh nine application on October twenty-fourth. Uh, they have a, uh, a a burden hand, so to speak, with a business that's looking at locating within the Dallasport Industrial Park. So that's going to be in Dallasport, so that's where the request is going to be. But, and again, our KC PETA Board is October twenty-fourth, so just want to make sure all three.
When are they bringing that forward?
What's that?
When were they bringing that forward?
October twenty-fourth.
Okay, wow, and then you have your meeting, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's when our meeting is, and and we're right now, we're still slyifying the agenda, so I've got a few, uh. Losers, so to speak, and then Heather Jogi's.
You will have to be running that meeting, I guess, since I won't be there.
Where are you at?
I have a pre, I already made plans before I knew there was a meeting, so.
Yes. And and ju- just for future reference, I'll I'll make sure to send over that that stuff, that that paperwork. Uh, for this next um, upcoming year, so that our all three of you have like when the meetings.
Get it on the calendar.
Yeah, just get it, yeah, yeah, um, uh, last but not least, because Heather Jogi's.
I have a, I have a hand up in the back, so.
Um, is that the, the funding?
Yeah.
You want me to add? I think Richard's the only one on the invite list to attend, and sometimes he may not be able to attend. You want me to add a Commissioner to that as an alternate?
That would be up to the two that want us to be a part of it.
I think we should stay informed, so if he needs an alternate, one of us needs to. Um, yeah, I'm good.
You said it's next Friday or this Friday?
This Friday at eleven AM.
I won't be able to make this Friday, but.
Uh.
I can, I can.
Give us an update.
Yeah, well, I I can just forward the invites over to you. To both of you. Uh, is this, is that okay, Commissioner? Or all three of you?
It is to me, as long as they coordinate and both don't show up to the same meeting.
And if Jake's going to be your alternate, you can just simplify it, send it to him, but I would like an update.
Okay.
Every time, so.
Um. I would, um. Like to ask HR if they can, um. Get with economic development on that ESD one twelve apprenticeship. Process. Um, and see if there's what what it would take or what it what it would entail, um, to get the county on board with that as well, but.
Okay, and then, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to back up a little bit and say thank you for keeping ClickTap moving.
Yeah.
It meant a lot to them. I did stop by and tell Carl.
Oh, okay, that's great.
Made his day.
Yeah, I I know a lot of them, because they don't see us every day. A lot of our small communities think we forget about them and.
And it's languished for twenty years, and they always wear it, so that's good movement.
Yeah, um, and, uh, and then the last thing is, so we're, uh, and thi- this is something that we're doing internally. Um, and and it's just something to put on, put put on y'all's radar. So we have that, so we have the Global Entrepreneur Month that we do every November. Um, and we're going to do something small again, so maybe something with the radio or something. It is, it used to be part of our EDO contract and they took it out. They still kind of want to do something. The stuff that she was talking about with the ag folks and the chat GPT. The chat GPT, we're looking at targeting the West Side like White Salmon, Benjen, we figured that was like a better fit with the GTA, the Gorge Technology Alliance. And then with the ag stuff, we were going to have that targeting the East Side, but that's going to be, knowing our ag industry. That like the best months might be like December and January and 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 a couple other things that we want to come out with. So we have this, you know, we have this two hundred. Two hundred employees have been laid off from Institute, and if you think in in years past, you know, maybe that a thousand or seven hundred and fifty. I mean, that that's about a third of the workforce, so that that that's a considerable amount, uh, of of a hit. In addition to that, we've been informed at the KC PETA meeting, uh, in regards to some various, uh, orders for vineyards. That they've dropped down like, uh, like thirty thousand acres in vineyards, so we have a big supply chain disruption out there. And then in in addition to that, um. We, one thing that we did want to bring up and and sing the praises of our local USDA, uh, representative out of that works right next to the, I forget her name, what was her name again?
Betty.
Yeah, Betty, uh, Betty's been very engaged in our local businesses and and folks out there on the east end after the fire. Uh, that burned up sixty-five thousand acres approximately. Um, and she's, so, you know, crop loss and stuff like that, and and Chelsea's been able to to speak with Betty and and just ensure that that's happening. Is we, uh, we're going to come out with and do just a small survey. And just kind of see how local businesses are doing on the on the west end for the supply chain stuff. And and doing and just surveying a a a a few people on the east end in regards to the vineyards and kind of see where we're at, see what we can do. Uh, see what kind of services that we that can be provided, whether it's at the federal level or as a state level, but we want to make sure that we're. And when I say survey, a lot of times people think quantitative surveys like, you know, and this would be a very kind of informal. Uh, type of survey type of thing, but, uh, we were wondering if, uh. I just want to put that on y'all's radar and and I can let you guys know what 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 the local folks say, so.
I think of the economy we're going into, it's important, and I've thought for a long time we needed to know the health of our businesses.
Yeah.
We haven't really tracked it.
And I know that Commissioner Jake Anderson has done, has done in the past with the Google Sheets stuff, phenomenal surveys with that, but this was not going to be as. Because, I mean, from a survey perspective, when you do quantitative stuff, typically you want like a sample size of ninety-nine, you know, or whatever, and you want it to make it as quantitative as possible, but. Due to the, I mean. We've only, our supply chain's five or six businesses down there, and even with the vineyards, you you got maybe nine or ten large landowners, and so it's going to be. Very informal in 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 that respect, and just kind of see if there's anything out there that we can assist with. So, um, that that's kind of the angle that we're taking, and then, and and I'm sorry to beat beat around the bush and and get too much in the weeds. But the State Auditor's Office, uh, James Lester from the State Auditor's Office had had given us, um. Uh, had contacted us, this has gone way above him, from my understanding, I spoke with Heather yesterday, or, uh, with this week. Or, I forget. Yeah, I think it was yesterday, and I spoke with James Lester, who was the Assistant State Auditor, uh, from the state. I spoke to him this morning. So KC PETA, um, just to put it out there, they're not sure how to treat it, so. Legal's going to come down, and it might be its own thing, and it will, or it could be continuing to be part of the. Part of the county, so the county for the last twenty-seven years has been part of the county, it's always been part of the single file audit, uh, so to speak. Um, there are other entities within the state that do it, like the county does it with economic development. There's other ports that have economic development. Uh, that's tied into them, and it's a very simple audit that they do. Uh, so I'm not sure what would change, like why, why, why things would change on the twenty-eighth year, and I'm unsure what the, what the, uh. Implications of that would be, but, uh, speaking with James this morning, they don't know when legal's ever going to get back to them, but. Uh, that's what we're at, so.
And they're asking their legal this question?
Yeah, so they asked for, so ClickTat County's got the two public corporations, uh, Kate, one of them being KC PETA, and so with the KC PETA folks. They're like, they just, they asked for the bylaws, they asked for the charter, they sent it up. Maybe we hear back within six months, maybe we hear back at the end of the day, I've got. James doesn't even know, so I I I just want to put that on everybody's radar. I'm not sure what the implications of that would be now. And I wanted to be able to talk about that openly.
I do find it interesting that they asked for the bylaws, though.
Yeah, I I've got.
Every audit asks for bylaws.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns?
Did you have any more to add to that, Heather?
No, the bylaws just help them determine. The purpose and the structure.
Okay, that's it. An- anything else?
So your, um, stuff with the chat GTB on the west side, um, are you going to be able to wrap that around with, uh. Maked's Gorge Economic Symposium where their futurist Steve Brown is, um, the keynote's going to be on navigating the generative AI revolution. And that might be able to something that you can piggyback off of.
Yes, so we were going to actually attend that and and speak with GTA, so I had not thought about that. We we can try and tie that in, see if GTA is willing to. Uh, incorporate them. So. Good. Well, thank you.
We got nothing. Thank you all. And welcome again. Uh, Ms. Heather, do you have anything else for us? No?
No.
Okay, just making sure. Um, for discussion.
Heather, I do look forward to the update on the KC Pita stuff. The boards have just been, I think it's housekeeping. And I appreciate the help on it.
Speaking of housekeeping, let's talk about the county renting houses. I, I'll give you my opinion, we'll just open it up for general discussion. As we all know, we have employment shortages and not enough skilled professionals to go around, and I believe that'll be the case for the coming decade. Um, one of the problems I feel we are going to see, and we may have already started to see it with our natural resources person, is the lack of the ability for someone to move here and find housing. Um, other entities in our county like KVH have already found this issue five years ago and have gone to come up with their own solutions, which is renting house um, that are just on KVH's budget every month, whether they have a tenant in them or not. Uh, in that way, when they do get a doctor or a nurse or a whatever that wants to move here, they can move straight into KVH's rental house uh, for a whatever transition period. Um, and uh, I believe they have like seven or eight, but we can find out more. Um, I think we're gonna have this issue in the county too, as we start looking for a planner, long, uh, planning director. Uh, we've had this issue with our natural resources person. Um, I think it's, it would be my recommendation that the county moves forward in a way that will best help the county find and retain staff uh, that can move to this area and actually find somewhere to live. And it is also a, call it a bonus, um, when you're advertising. Um, just like HR pointed out, what they do up on the islands and all the, the bonuses they give there. That I think, and you posted that you will supply whatever, six months of transitional housing or whatever else, it's a, it's an added perk that might actually get you a warm body. Um, so it would be my recommendation if the board had concurrents uh, to look at at least uh, testing the model and trying to see if the, if we could get one rental under county operation, what the legality would be, do all that legwork. Um, if there was consensus of the board that thought that it was a viable project. That's my presentation.
Well, my first two to write off the top are dwindling budget that we have to cut, and where would the money come from for uh, keeping a monthly rental that we'd have to pay for in the budget, and then also finding anything. If nobody else can find anything, where are we going to find something? Yeah, I mean, we may have to look for quite a long time before we can secure something.
Uh, it's possible you'd have to look for some time, but there's plenty of people out there that have rental units like me that would love to have a guaranteed paycheck, especially if part of the time there was nobody living in it. I would feel more comfortable renting my house to a skilled professional, uh, which I would be renting it to Kate, to the county, and the county would be putting their skilled prevents, professional in it.
So a VR bill?
Well.
Maybe.
Tec- technically, I would be renting it to the county.
They.
Uh, for the month. So I'm looking at it from a landlord's perspective that I wouldn't have to pick and qualify rental candidate applicants uh, and have any issues with uh, denying one person uh, in the litigation of that and or evictions and or any of that, cause it would, it would all be rented through the gap.
Do you have an idea for money?
Um, I was talking to a person this morning that the church rents their three-bedroom house to KVH, and they said they rent it for seventeen hundred.
So times twelve, and do you have money? I was asking, do you have an idea where the money could come from within our county, to put that on the budget?
Um. I, I have a lot of ideas, but uh, it. Well, first of all, it could come from the planning director's salary starting next month that isn't being utilized. Um, and probably won't be for the next six months to a year. So I mean, there's consequences, when, when you figure it's, you know, fifteen grand a year or something. It's just a matter of, do you, this board would have to weigh its priorities and decide whether that was a priority worth being addressed or not a priority worth being addressed. And if it doesn't, then fine, don't fund it, but um, I, I think it's a priority that's keeping us, or will be keeping us over the next ten years from getting skilled replacements uh, for our um, upper levels staff.
I, I agree, it's a problem, but I think the budget situation we're in, especially looking at the, going forward in the next few years. Um, I think it's a long-term look, maybe start looking at what could be available for housing, what would be a reality, and then also the reality of where would we get that money? I'm not willing to take money from a position, I don't even know if you can legally transfer that from one account to another to do that, that'd be an ask of everyone in the financial. Um, that position's crucial to keep in that department short up, and we have to do everything.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not recommending that we defund the planning director and don't hire one to pay for a house, that's, that's not what I'm asking.
Even look at that.
I'm, no, I'm just saying you will save that amount of money.
Okay.
You, where you come up with the money would be a finance question for Jen that would come out of nonparticular or something like that. Uh, it would be the same scenario of where are you coming up to money for the flock cameras for thirty grand that aren't in the budget? Um, that's where you would be getting the money if you so chose to go forward, it wouldn't be stripping it out of something that's currently funded in the budget.
Jen, would you like to come up to the table?
No. I didn't figure she would. If you're gonna talk, you have to get in front of a mic. I'm not saying we, that's, that was not my recommendation. Um, I was saying you're gonna see a cost savings um, from not having to pay employee wages. Uh, and I think that's going to be something that's ongoing uh, both in our natural resource department and our planning department, and who knows what the next one will be. Uh, because you can't get somebody because you don't have house. Um, now where we fund such a thing, um, this board would have to think that it was a big enough problem to address it in their budgets going forward, and that's why I'm bringing the topic up today. If the board does not feel like it's a big enough problem to address in their budgets, then I won't bring it up again. I was just. Is she trying to handle the mic?
What she said for everyone online is that our most recent hire was able to find house. So I guess one of my, one of my concerns is, is if we rent a house, uh, that house may work for one potential candidate or their family or whatever, but it may not work for a different one. And so, you know, what will work for our most recent hire might not work for a family of five that's moving here, that's, you know, a, a um, upper level management. Um, I would be concerned about how many months out of the year are we paying for this that it may not be used? And so then what's our overall cost? Um, I think an interim step that may work that uh, we should have the discussion with is with KVH and ask KVH. If you're renting four or five places, how often are they used, and is there a possibility that we could rent from you for two months if we have somebody that moves in here?
I can give you the answer to that one, and they rent seven or eight units, they're almost always full, and no, they're not willing to share.
And is that because of their traveling nurses and traveling doctors, or is that because that's part of their business model? Um, I guess I would need more information about why that is. Um, the other statement is, is so if we're renting a house, say, twelve months out of the year, that's one house that's not available for rent for anyone else in the community who has a job that's working here uh, in the area, so I think we need more information. Gotta come up to a mic.
Oh, I have one. Okay, um, just in my past employment, um, we did rent a house and eventually purchased a house, but it was for renting out rooms to temporary employees during the time that they would be here, which financially makes sense. But if we're talking about families, then yeah, I could see how that could be a much more challenging situation.
Another option that, uh, if you want me to look into, I can, I mentioned to, I think I mentioned to you individually, um, I saw a posting for HR Director at Wasco County, and one of the benefits they're offering is three to six months of housing, and I don't know if that's they own um, multiple houses, I don't know if that's to provide that, or it's just a taxable benefit and part of the negotiations as they, so somebody could have a place, you know, to supplement the cost of renting while they look for a place to buy or build. And I'm not sure San Juan County, they're twelve months, if that's a taxable benefit, or if it's a, you know, if they actually have a place for them to stay, so. If you want, I can look into at least Wasco County in Oregon and San Juan County in this state to see what, just what that is. Is it just a taxable benefit for a defined period of time to cover the costs? Uh, or is it actually a facility, a, a house or apartment or something like that?
Well, I won't give you that guidance, whether you should look into it or not, I'll leave that to my seatmates, but I will advise them to the to please, if you're really not in favor of this, don't waste staff's time looking into it. Um, just be respectful of everybody's time. If you're no, just say no, and let's move on. Uh, that's all I, my recommendation is.
I, I don't think you have to do a deep dive, but I'd like to know what they did with that, if it's a taxable benefit, and if you could offer that upcoming in a job application, if things get harder and harder and harder, and we have to chart, start choosing, what are the things we're gonna offer?
I think I'm gonna reach out to Hood River County too, cause it surprises me that Wasco County would do that, and Hood River County not, where the price of housing in Hood River and the available market is pretty tight, so I'm, I may reach out to them and ask if they're considering something too, so.
And maybe an alternative to having a house, something like that would help, because we have two locations. We have West End to consider too for hiring and employees.
Yeah. I think for one position, I'm not gonna go into much detail. I think the reason was they just needed, couldn't find transitional housing because they wanted to move down and build, and just, you're doing that multiple states away, it's just as opposed to getting them here and getting them started and giving them up, helping them find.
Rentals are not easy to find in this area. Um, and the ones you do find are usually section eight. Um, and so a quality rental in this area is not easy.
So I'll do a limited look, and the county's mentioned, and just see what it looks like and get back to you. That's all right.
Yeah, I think it's worth a conversation to keep going.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, assuming we still have not got the legal opinion back that we sent Wednesday um, about uh, SEPA planner, that kind of stuff, I've not heard. Yeah, okay. We did, we did send that Wednesday, so. Um, what else we got?
Do you wanna talk about the, uh, the planner versus an interim director, or is that this afternoon, or is that since today's, Moche's last day, I believe?
We have that on here somewhere, we should be having it on here somewhere, if we don't have it on here somewhere.
Let's talk about it.
Where's it at, I think? It's not on there. Oh, there we go. Go for it.
Good timing.
Well, the, last week you had a discussion, you know, two separate discussions, one about the SEPA official and floodplain administrator, and those, I know you've submitted a PA request for that, so you're waiting for information, but in terms of the lead, I think the board chair talked to, to um, one of the directors about potentially being signatory authority type level of work, and um, I think the board chair also asked um, Mochi to provide kind of a list of who'd be doing what within the department, I think you got that today. Um, and in my discussions with um, Mochi, I think she feels comfortable that that Lori um, has had signatory authority in her absence and, and has been doing some of this stuff already. Time cards, paying the bills, uh, when she's not here. And there would be some additional duties outlined in that document, such as uh, leading the staff meetings, kinda coordinating, make sure that the there's coverage and those kind of things. Um, any personnel issues would go to HR. So I guess that's another option as far as if you choose to designate somebody temporary is, in some capacity is lead, whatever title we would call it.
Yeah, so after we had our discussion last week, um, I did have Lori or uh, Moshi essentially draft this document, which is where you go today, uh, which I just saw today too. Um, to give us essentially more information for conversation. Um, and I guess the way I look at it is if, if Lori Anderson has been handling public records permits and building permit reviews and, and time cards and all that stuff when Moshi's on vacation, anyway, it doesn't seem uh, logical to me to have somebody else necessarily do that. Um, we were thinking, or I was thinking, having some kind of director oversight? But the more I kinda look at what, what would that director be necessarily doing, I can't come up with anything. Um, because if it's anything HR related, it, it should really be going HR anyway. Um, so for me, um, the way I'm kinda sitting right now is not appointing a director over the planning department, not making an interim director. Um, and having Lori run the things that Lori's been running. Um, and if there's an HR issue, it goes to HR, and then that's one side, and then on the SEPA side, hopefully when we get a review back. Um, being able to keep our small, de- designate two people to do SEPA's, one in-house for the small things, boundary line adjustment, short plats, whatever. Uh, but then bigger SEPA's, we need to find an answer for, so, but that, again, that's two issues, but. Uh,
Yeah, a- and I have, I don't know, we have any doubt or question? The most she's trying to look out for the best interest of her staff, uh, as, as she transitions out, and I think if, and I'm, I'm assuming she's talked to her staff about this as well, so um, it's something you could try. And see how it goes, and if there's issues, re, readjust, but I think um.
I did talk to Lori Anderson this morning. Um, and she feels fully confident that she can do the things that.
And I, I've talked to staff, and I'm confident they have the attitude of uh, doing their good work like they've been doing. I just want them to realize they absolutely have the support of the board. And I think it might be a good idea that Lori just do an update every week, just come in like Jeff does in the morning and give us an update where they're at. And just keep us in the loop.
I think it's, it's uh, it's it's, it's very good that uh, Mochi gave you, now you know who's primary in all of these functions. So there's a lot of times that's the question, who's doing what, but I think that's been given to you in great detail, so that's, that's a big help.
I would just say, uh, uh, thank you, uh, to Mochi for providing this um, document, and the only question. And the only question on it is who would sign Lori's leave of absence? And I would say the board chair should do that. And other than that, I can follow suit with everything that's on here.
So if, uh, if they're listening or somebody's listening, Lori should be here next Tuesday or talk to lease and land by getting on the agenda for a quick, for a few minutes. So.
Yeah, I would have staff reach out to them and, and let them know that. Figure out what's the best time for them if they want to just jump on after Jeff every morning. Just kind of tell us what's going on in there and.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Rob, you had sent us two applications this morning, Bert. Um, will you be bringing those forward?
Um, I was just asked, uh, last week, I think it was by Commissioner Anderson to, to send those to, to provide them. And so ongoing, I checked last night, there hadn't been another one, at least it was last night. So wasn't my intent to, to make a recommendation yet. I think if you think one or both is worth interviewing, then, then, uh, if I get that signal from two of you or three of you, then we can set that up. If you want to wait a little longer, we can do that as well. If you're interested in one, not the other, we can reach out to that one saying, hey, you know, we're still gathering, you know, I don't know how long they stay viable. It's a pretty fluid market. So I think if you find one you like, you should probably interview them. If it's a strong candidate, not wait to get two or three, because you'll risk losing
Having them find something else.
Yeah.
And I, I think there was some varied education there that fit several holes that I saw that could be translated into some of that position.
So maybe when you, all three had a chance to look at it, we can.
I've looked at both of them. There was one, um, local. Uh, that looked entertaining. And then the other one I was not interested in interviewing.
So what would you like me to do? Commissioner Anderson, have you had a chance to see him yet?
Um, I have not reviewed those both yet.
Maybe we can broach this discussion again this afternoon.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
If somebody writes it down on the blue card so we remember. Unfinished business?
Unfinished?
Mr. Jeff? Did you hear me? While he's here for some reason, and I hate to adjourn without seeing what he was here for. Could be. I mean, I don't know if we have more things to, word pending discuss. Oh, look at that. We have Andy on our Zoom, a celebrity.
No, I had nothing. Nope. I just had several people that were presenting this morning, included conversations with me and things I had input to those grants and other things. Wanted to make sure there wasn't any questions for me.
Nope.
Are you, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Southwest Washington Home Builders Association.
To see?
Uh, yeah, Central Washington Home Builders Association, I think. Southwest is, uh, workforce development. Anything else word pending is that you guys want to talk about today?
Well, in the essence of the ticking clock, the CIPA appeal at EFSC. And, um,
That's on our agenda.
Is it on the agenda below? I didn't look for it. Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you. So I'll save it for them.
That's the problem. We'll put it all on the agendas. We get the free time like right now and we're like, do, 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 do. We can't talk about it till later.
Well, she had us down for eleven o'clock lunch.
Lunch whenever, but anything not on our list that we need to re add on our list or any more discussions that need to be had later in or now. Um, I'm one of those, you know, it's the minute we adjourn for lunch, I'm going to go.
The light bulb will come on.
Yep.
There's always this afternoon.
Oh, um, meeting with Skamania next week. Where are we planning on doing that? Are we going to do it in here and?
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, yeah. Uh, I knew that. Are we going to do that in this room? We're going to do that downstairs? Why I'm asking?
I assumed this room.
Just kind of throw three chairs down in the, the bench down there. Okay, so they can jump up there. Okay, that works. Okay. Oh, did you ever get an answer on? I'll ask that later. Okay, I have nothing. Does anybody else have nothing before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we recess for lunch.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion second recess for lunch in discussion. And none, all those in favor of recessing for lunch back at one o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, we are recording. We are live. We are at one o'clock. So we will call our regular business meeting of the Colletta County Board of Commissioners to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Business agenda, uh, the one thing I can see that we would need to add on is under new business, uh, discussion about, uh, public records. Where are we putting that? It, so it's already on here. But we don't have it under something. So if you want to, um, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda. And what was your, was the?
Uh, public records.
Uh, with three add-ons, uh, one being, uh, the Prothman contract for the planning department and recruitment. Um, two being the under unfinished business, the Department of Army, and three being, what you just mentioned, public records, um, under new business.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda with three add-ons, public records and proflame contract under new business and Department of the Army under unfinished business. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval with, of the business agenda with those three add-ons, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion second on the minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments on the minute? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval this summer, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next item is citizen comments. This comment will be limited to three minutes per person. There should be a clock on your screen. Um, please state your name and general location for the record at the start of your comments. Um, the commissioners, uh, may wish to respond at the end uh, of a citizen comment. So if you're looking for a response, uh, you might want to hang around. Um, the one thing I will mention to everybody in Zoom land, and this is new, so pay attention. Um, the board has chosen to adjust its Tuesday work schedules. Um, so starting on the twenty-fourth, we will no longer be having a morning workshop. We will be opening our business meeting at nine AM. Uh, and starting to conduct our business, starting right at nine AM. Uh, we will still have afternoon business meeting, but we are extending our business meeting. With extending our business meeting, we still want to have citizen comment. But we want to make sure that you're allowed to comment on items throughout the day, including what's on our agenda, uh, the consent agenda. So if we have comment in the afternoon, but we pass consent agenda in the morning, you're limited on comment. So we will be moving citizen comment uh, to roughly nine oh five, um, in the morning, um, starting on the twenty-fourth. So how I plan to handle that, since everybody may or may not know, is we'll have a citizen comment at nine oh five-ish in the morning, starting on the twenty-fourth, but also at one o'clock on the twenty-fourth. I will allow comment for anybody who didn't make it that morning. Uh, but once I notify, you know, if, if Jane Smith comments at one o'clock on the twenty-fourth, and I notify her that in the future, this is at nine o'clock in the morning, I won't allow Jane Smith to comment at one o'clock. Um, but we'll still do a one o'clock, um, for a couple of weeks, just for those people to transition that, that aren't aware that we switch to mornings. Um, so anyway, with that, I won't eat up any more of your citizen comment time. If anybody in the room has citizen comment wants to make it, please raise your hand. If not, I'll come back to you. Don't see it. So we'll go online. Anybody online, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. You have a citizen comment for the board of commissioners? The rain scared everybody away. I'm loving the rain. The rain is nice green grass. I get to feed my cows less because they're actually eating on their own. It's great. Citizen comment, tell me about your cows. I don't know. Apparently nobody online has citizen comment for us. Look back in the room. All right, we have one in the room. Come on forward. Name and general location for the minutes.
Kathy Moko Goldendale. I was just wanting to make some comments about all the things that have been going on around here, all on one day, Saturday. Starting at nine in the morning with the candidates coffee out at Centerville Grange. And then all day long, uh, the tour to concourse at Mary Hill Museum was car show, which brings people from all over, I think, far and wide to come to that and bring their cars. And then at noon, we had the Faith and Blue Law Enforcement Support barbecue on the courthouse lawn. And, uh, I went by and checked it out and there were tables set up everywhere and it looked very well attended. That was neat. And, and then lastly, we had the Clickitap Valley Health Black Tie and Blue Jeans Dinner Saturday night, and that is their annual fundraising dinner. I've been involved with that in the past, and for the first time it was sold out. People were, you know, you buy your tickets in advance, but it was sold out. And, uh, they had a wonderful dinner. They have a new chef at the hospital and he did some very nice things. And they had a lot of fun auction items. As an example, the Zohar's Outdoor Odyssey, uh, river rafting for, I don't know how many people it was for, but those are the kind of things that they auction off at the raffle. So it's, it's a good night. And I talked to somebody this morning that said they made some good raise, some good money. So that's really, so we, we live in a very busy little place here. And it all happened before it rained, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back online. Does anybody else online have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Unmute yourself or raise your hand or otherwise get our attention. I don't even have a Scooby Doo today. All right, nobody online. We'll go back in the room. Anybody else in the room have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Holding out still. We'll come back. Um, so we'll stay online and we'll just say if anybody online or in the room has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, uh, raise your hand or otherwise get our attention and we will go on to signing permits for road approaches and all those other fun things that we get to do today. Another written form, my seatmates for the agenda. Uh, I don't care where we put it. Legal updates. As I'm looking at the vouchers for Foster Gerby. No, another catch. What says twelve on the blue card? We allow mistakes. Um, I didn't care. I was just going to do it under unfinished. Okay, just a quick conversation. Where's Bird Creek Road? Anybody know? We are still in citizen comment. If anybody has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, raise your hand, unmute yourself or otherwise get our attention. Nobody's rushing to the microphone. Mr. Barde, you weren't here when I discussed this. Starting on the twenty-fourth, we are going to change our meeting agendas. So instead of doing workshop in the morning, starting at ten and then afternoon business agenda, we're going to start our business meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. And just run it all day and try to get more work done. Uh, but part of that will be adjusting citizen comment from one o'clock to nine oh five in the morning. Um, so that starts on the twenty-fourth, so.
I'm surprised there's no citizen comment on that.
Yeah, should be citizen comment on that, you'd think. So we will still, I will still allow some citizen comment for a week or two after that at one o'clock for the people that didn't get the memo. Um, but we will work our way to transitioning to that. That way everybody can have a comment on the things we're doing in the morning, the bills, the agenda, the consent agenda, permits, things like that, in case they want to. um, say something about something before we sign it. Um, citizen comment, now's your time. Unmute yourself, raise your hand. We're after you have Kathy twenty seven more minutes. What did they do to the black tie and blue jean fundraiser at the Grange?
We've done it at Mary Hill Museum class, mostly in the Grange.
I can add Kathy's good comment and say thank you to the high school students. They acted as servers. They're all dressed up in suits and they did a great job.
And a friend of ours, Granton, played the piano.
I guess I will mention that Thursday, October twelfth, from seven to nine AM, uh, the, the Goldenale Grange is having a farmer's breakfast for all you hardworking farmers that supply our food. I believe they prefer you RSVP with Leanne. You have to call Leanne for that one, but I don't have it off the top of my head. Call her at me if you're interested and I'll give you the information. I'm still in citizen comment and we will sit here for another fifteen minutes. Waiting to see if there's any comment. The other part of citizen comment we are going to change is the length of time we have citizen comment, so we don't have these issues. Um, so we will take citizen comment until citizens are done making comments. Uh, if that's ten minutes, that's ten minutes. If it's fifty minutes, it's fifty minutes. Uh, and then we will move on with our day. Still in citizen comment. If anybody's got citizen comment.
We got another application and I think Rob dropped it off on your table or natural resources, if you wanted to look at that while we're sitting here.
I dropped it off on her desk.
I think so.
Do you want to look at it? I have a copy.
If you have a copy, just, yeah.
Maybe it's Nita. Wonder if we can sign up?
Part of John S McCain's. Heard of that? John McCain's. Nationalism is part of the Udall Foundation.
Oh.
Nineteen ninety, Congress amended the Udall Foundation's enabling legislation to establish.
It's a really varied history.
I, mine must be in my office and I didn't go in there, so I'll, I'll go with that. Go ahead with your citizen comment, please.
This is Greg Wagner with CESE. With the Carriage Your Project getting permitted through FSSEC, the FSSEC people have used the county's EOZ, the comp plan in Carriage Your Project's favor and against the citizens. I believe the EOZ is a detriment to our citizens because it gives special treatment for these corporations that they can be permitted outright. The citizen wants to do something with their property and they are in the EOZ, they have to go through a conditional use process. I believe the EOZ ought to be eliminated and any project ought to be done through a conditional use. I also believe that the two thousand and five amendment in the comprehensive plan that basically says the county encourages wind and solar and wants it here. That's something else FSSEC used against us and that needs to be removed. We can't change the fact that the county has permitted Lund Hill Solar Site, which they use as a precedent. But we need to take and make sure that FSSEC in any future solar projects cannot use the EOZ and the comp plan against us as citizens of the county. EOZ covers sixty eight, six hundred and eighty thousand acres of our county. That's too much. So allow them to be permit, permit wind and solar sites outright just because the EOZ exists, works against us as, as a community and as a people. And that's just not, not tolerated. We can't allow them to keep, continue to use our own zoning ordinances against us. So it's time for this board to consider looking at eliminating the EOZ and amending the comprehensive plan. Check the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Somebody else in the room or online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I've seen it. We are still in citizen comment. If anybody online has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, let us know. Guess we can do a last call for citizen comment. That usually gets about eight people to come out of the closet. Uh, last call for citizen comment for today. If you do, raise your hand in the room or unmute yourself, raise your hand online. All right, so we did have two comments. Do my seatmates have any comments?
Thank you as always, Kathy. And then I've added, uh, I already gave you my comments about the students and how well they did at that event. And Mr. Wagner, I agree, it's time for Clickitap County to step up to the plate and move into the future. Um, it's been a long time coming. I'm working on it. I'm communicating with agencies about how to move forward. And I'm also attending a planning conference in Olympia at the end of this month.
If you'd like to go.
Kathy, thank you for your positive comments as always. Um, we live in a beautiful place, uh, fault-filled, um, full of people who volunteer and give back to their community. And it's great when you always point out all the amazing things that people are actually doing to give back. Um, it puts things into perspective very easily. Uh, Mr. Wagner, thank you very much for your comment. Um, this county adopted the EOZ with its eyes wide open. It also changed its can, uh, uh, two thousand and five amendment to the comp plan. And that was taken uh, in front of public hearing and, and that is what the direction of the community wanted at that time. Um, we were hoping to open up the comp plan very shortly and have discussions about the comp plan. But sadly, we have lost our planning director and so our ability to make amendments uh, to the comp plan is going to be severely limited until we find someone new to come on board and get them trained up and get them to, to know everything they need, that they need to know about Clickitap County and our customs and our cultures and our history. Um, and with that, I would just like to, to one more time, say thank you very much um, to our planning director, Mochi Lindblad, who um, has served this county faithfully for many, many years. Um, and has done a uh, great job for Clickitap County and providing services for its citizens. Um, I only wish that uh, we could have supported her uh, better in her role. And with that, I will yield back my time.
Thank you, sir. Um, guess my comment for Kathy is always the same. Thank you for being the ray of sunshine um, that we get at citizen comment, because I believe Commissioner Anderson is right. Um, we do live in a great place. We live in a wonderful place with wonderful views and wonderful people. Um, we don't often see them in here because they have busy lives. But we do see some in here and we appreciate the few that do show up from time to time and, and keep us company. Um, with that, I'll move on to Greg. About removing the EOZ and amending the comp plan, as I'm sure you're aware, uh, I have been trying to amend the comp plan since the day I took office. Um, I believe there was some roadblocks put in place for the first uh, part of that. Um, the roadblocks are now gone this year. Uh, we have been moving forward with that and updating our shoreline management and our CAO, which need to be done before the comp plan. Um, but as Commissioner Anderson said, we now have a new roadblock. Uh, and that's not having anyone qualified in the county to can, continue those projects. Uh, so while we are looking for a new planning director, we don't know how long that will take. Uh, there will need to be conversations by this board on whether we hire an outside consulting firm to do some of that work for us. Um, and or hire an outside consulting firm to look at some of the work already performed by the one we have. But as Commissioner Anderson said, I think we as a board um, need to dedicate ourselves to take better care of the employees we currently have. Um, to try to make sure that we can keep them employed with the county. Uh, we have to have their back. When not everybody does and we have to have their back when the public maybe treats them in an unlike unfriendly manner. Um, because if we don't, we could end up in the same problem with the new planning director. Uh, and they go away and here we are again, not being able to get stuffed up. So we need to take a good, hard look at our management style. We'll just leave it at that. Um, with that, other than that, thank you for your comment, Mr. Wagner. I do agree with you. We need to update those plans and um, all I can say is I'm working on it as fast as we're allowed to work on it these days. Uh, but until we can update our comp plan and the EOZ, which is going to take years, I would rather just make amendments to them to cover us uh, between now and then. So that's what we are currently doing with the Planning Commission. And uh, I'm sure the Planning Commission will have more when they're done with this great work they're currently doing. Uh, with that, we'll call an end to citizen comments. And move on. We do not have any public hearings, public meetings or bid openings today. Um, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us three items on the consent agenda, um, of which I would make a motion to approve all three.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to prove the three items on the consent agenda are three busy day items. Uh, any discussion on any of the three items? Problems, issues, hearing none? Uh, all those in favor of approval of this consent agenda with three items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passes.
Am I the only one with payment approvals? Okay, I'm Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve account payable warrants in the amount of one hundred five thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents for the date ending October ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion as second to pay the bills. Any discussion on paying the bills? Um, I will tell you again, I looked at them again this morning and they were very small, hence the, if you can call that a small number.
Yeah.
Um, there wasn't much there and there wasn't anything of importance around to your attention. Uh, with that, any other discussion on the bills, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the bills, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Next item on here is discussion with City of Goldendale. Just in case Pat wanted to show up, I guess I'll look online real quick to see if he's on there. Or if Pat, if you are online, city administrator, say so. If not, I'll move on to something else because you, he did say he wanted to attend, so I want to kind of give him the benefit of the doubt for ten minutes to see if he shows up. Um, we have on here new agenda schedule. We've talked about that at length. Um, anything else we need to talk about that other than the start date of the twenty-fourth and anything else we're missing? The order that is currently in, did you guys get a chance to look at the draft working order? I would say, yeah, let's go with that. We might find changes or tweaks or suggestions to tweak. And fill gaps in there because I imagine probably get another department update in the morning and maybe that's um, planning. You know, we just slot them in there for fifteen, twenty minutes every, every week and that'll fill up that little morning time bank. Um, if that works for their schedule upstairs anyway. But yeah, we'll kind of play with it as we go to try to get as much work as done as we can. Uh, any other discussion on new agenda schedule? No. Um, I added discussion on conflict attorney pay. As most of you are all aware, we can't trouble finding a conflict attorney. Uh, occasionally the attorneys that are under contract with the county cannot defend someone um, because of conflict and when we reach out to non-contracted attorneys to see if they would be willing to be at a conflict attorney. Uh, we get various answers. Well, we get the answer no. We get various answers. Well, we get the answer no. With various reasons, of which I will not go into publicly. But those reasons do not have to do with this board. So my recommendation to this board is we need to try to encourage some of those attorneys who do not want to currently partake in our legal system. We have to incentivize them to partake in our legal system. Because the last thing I want to do is have a child molester released from jail. Because we can't find an attorney that will take on the case. I believe part of that can be incentivized through pay. If we're currently paying a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour. But you can find three people willing to do it for two fifty. I'd rather pay more and keep the child molester locked up. So my recommendation, if the board is interested in at least hearing if that is an option, would be to advise staff to reach out to some of the conflict attorneys that have already given us the reasons why they won't. And see if a new pay number might incentivize them to say yes. And if the answer is yes, then we can have the discussion on whether we want to do it or not. But I personally think that's the only way we're going to get a conflict attorney. So, well, there we go. I just finished up my speech about conflict attorneys and here you come. So I will quickly redo my speech. That pretty much said, we have a problem finding conflict attorneys for various reasons. When we reach out to them, they don't want to do it for various reasons. But we need to try to encourage them to do it. And the only way we can encourage them to do it is through pay structure. That my recommendation is to advise staff to reach out to the conflict attorneys that have told us no in the past. And ask them if it is a dollar issue, or if we can incentivize them. My example was if we're paying a hundred and twenty five dollars an hour, what if we paid two fifty? Would that incentivize you? And then if we find a couple to go, yeah, that would incentivize me, then come back and have a discussion amongst us on whether we actually wanted to raise conflict attorney pay. So that was the speech I just gave in a nutshell. Do you have any history? Me and Christian Anderson are well aware of the conflict attorney problem because we've had this problem for two years. I'm not entirely sure it's been a con, have we talked about this? You said it on the last, I was gonna say, I don't know if we've talked about it as a board this year, other than knowing it's a problem. So is there anything more you want to add to what I said or?
It's a state problem. I mean, it's, it's a country problem. So finding them is harder, keeping them is harder. Will it matter if we pay higher? I don't.
I, and that's me, I don't know either, but that's.
You get an answer. Did you get an answer to your question about travel pay possibly? Okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's just it. So it's travel. Why would the person from Yakima or Wenatchee want to come down here for a hundred and twenty five bucks an hour?
Right.
I guarantee you, you, you could say you're not sure it's about money. If we paid three thousand dollars an hour, we'd have five hundred of them. So there's always a dollar number. It's a matter of is the dollar number acceptable or not acceptable? You know, three thousand dollars an hour, I'd argue is unacceptable. But we need to know where that threshold is so we can better make an educated decision before we have to force the judges to release a predator. Because we can't defend them. That's not a conversation I want to have to the public because I'm afraid of paying an extra hundred and fifty bucks an hour. So I, I want to be more informed so we can have a better decision.
If we can't provide a conflict attorney, do they move them to another district that can? Do we send them to Yakima for that trial or no? We just have to cancel it and say we can't provide it?
I don't know what the official answer is. That's where you have to go to your county.
Because then I didn't know if we were paying for that cost to pay for that for having.
Then I think the jail attendants have tested that. If we move somebody out of our county, we put them in another county and it becomes our payout.
There's Mormon. So figured out the other way around.
Say there's, there's, there's always a cost because technically if I'm in jail for a year and a half and you're refusing to give me a court date because you can't even get me an attorney. Pretty sure I'm going to win on appeal for not getting a speedy trial. So, yeah. It's, it's, it's one of our problems. Our other problem is not being able to try people who are found incapacitated for mental reasons, which is why we filed the lawsuit and thankfully just one. Maybe that will help. But anyway. If I'm going to direct staff to reach out to these potential conflict attorneys to see if a number would incentivize them, not giving any permission to do it or not. Pay them that just to get the feelers. I don't want to direct staff to reach out and get us more information without at least two votes saying direct staff to get information. So I need a second vote if I'm going to direct staff to at least get that information. Or I don't get a second vote and the case is closed and we don't.
Did we get information on what other counties are paying? Yeah.
But they have a. Or district court.
I, I would argue that we're not comparable. Because Skamania is very, very close to Clark County, so a lot of attorneys will come right on in. And I would also argue that we have personnel that are different than Skamania County. So we're different.
I'd like, I'd like to know if and it would help.
Hey, do you have any problems that you want to?
I'm fine with staying researching what we currently pay our conflict attorneys. Because this is primarily at Superior Court because I think we have plenty of attorneys at District Court that we don't have to worry about it. Knowing how much we pay our, our district court attorneys.
The only question I would have that would help us ensure here. How often would we need a conflict attorney that you would? Can you give me any idea on how many hours a year I would have to pay a conflict attorney? So just if we decided to budget wise pay more than we're currently paying, it would be nice to have some idea what we could budget for, but sounds like we've never tracked. Okay. I was not looking at raising the rate for the anything but a conflict attorney. I'm just trying to find the conflict attorney that we can't find any other way.
I guess, you know, my, my issue is, is that we're paying two attorneys a goodly sum to deal with all of the Superior Court cases. And so in essence, we're paying for them to deal with that court case yet because of a conflict now they don't, they get the same amount of pay but don't have to deal with the case. Why is, why is that conflict attorney's wages not coming as part of that contract?
How often do we have neither conflict attorney?
It just depends. In this particular case that we're looking for right now, it's a personality conflict that this person cannot work with.
Cannot work with any either of our attorneys?
With both attorneys in different various ways. And so there are certain things that exactly. When their rights and they know them, then they come forward and they, they tell you what they want and what they don't want. And we can't get around that.
So I mean, how, how prevalent do we have someone like this individual? Is this like a one person a year kind of thing or a once every couple of years or is this happen ten times a year?
Plus we have defendants that are co-defendants that have been co-defendants for a very long time that keep coming back into our system. There's only so many times that our two attorneys can take those. And if there's other co-defendants, they can't do anything with them. Because then it.
It's conflict to that. And it's the same names over and over again, more than likely. So. Okay. I don't know that we can solve this, but we can at least see what we can do to try. Okay. Any other discussion on conflicts attorneys for now?
Yeah, when we look into it, I think your questions are valid. How many hours have been billed to us in the last multiple years? How much does that, what is that as a percentage of our actual agreements that we currently have with our two attorneys? In comparison to their overall time, I mean.
If you would like to look at that, sir, I would be happy to allow you to look at it. But if you're asking for me to allow you to direct staff to look into it, I'm going to be a no vote because I'm not interested in defunding the current attorney's contracts. So you can look to the other seatmate to see if you have permission to ask staff to do that.
I, I think it's a pretty simple issue. I would just like to know if we up the amount. I'm not interested in staff doing a lot of work on this issue. I think we just need to find out if an, an amount can bring more help.
Anything else on the conflict attorney issue? We're on discussion regarding potential meeting with city of Goldendale. So Pat Munyon, city of Goldendale.
He's online.
Is he? Perfect. Mister Pat, are you online?
Yes, I am.
There he is, but he's very quiet. You got to get close to your mic.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, sir. I'm on A T and T. How about you?
Yeah, I can.
So I will pre-work with this. Mister Munyon reached out to me and wanted to know about a potential meeting between the county and the city of Goldendale. They have concerns that they would like to address on a joint meeting. And he also mentioned that doing these on a regular probably also wouldn't be a bad idea, but I will just open with that and see if Mister Munyon has anything to add.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm here as a representative of the city of Goldendale's city council and the mayor. They're, they're requesting a meeting, not only with the county, but other interest party such as WOGAP and and Department of Social House and Services to address the homeless problems we're having and inside the city and you know, I, I know, I know this is a really difficult topic and there's definitely some challenges to do this, but trying to find a route of why they are keep coming here. We're getting more and more and usually this time of year, it seems to be trickling down. From my understanding of past history and part of the issue that the city council is concerned about is, you know, this is costing the city additional money dealing with this homeless problems. Our hands are kind of tied by the legislative laws that have gone in effect the last few years. You know, there's been some correction on part of that, but it hasn't swung far enough back. We're having a severe vandalism in our parks. This is a weekly issue and sometimes a daily issue. It, it's, it's costing the city a lot of money and plus the continuous you know, circle of arresting them, they get released and they go back to doing the same thing as they're again costing the city additional court costs, attorney fees. I, I, I guess I, I'm not sure. And can't get a clear answer of why they're coming to Goldendale. There's nothing here for them.
Right. And, and you stand out on a street corner here with a sign and you're not going to get any money. I think through investigation, what you're going to find is the increase in recording fees has created dollars for affordable housing that are now getting distributed to various entities to pay for hotels and tents and things like that. And I think you're going to find this to be a walk app. Scenario.
You know, I guess my part of the concern with walk app that I have is I, I get, I get what their responsibilities are and what they're trying to accomplish. But when they're giving tents away, we don't allow camping in our city parks. Where, where are these people supposed to legally take these tents and go put them up?
Right. And the other concern I've heard addressed out there is homeless county providing transportation via mountainous transit from the DOWS to Goldendale. So I wouldn't doubt it if that topic comes up if we decide to have such a meeting. So anyway, those are some of the issues that the city is requesting to have a meeting on. And now I will leave it up to my seatmates to have a discussion on whether they want to have that meeting or not.
I want to thank Mister Munyon. Thank you. Thank you for reaching out. This is on my mind daily. And I want you to know you're not alone in the city. I live rural and when I travel, I see it growing in the rural areas too. Odd areas where things are starting to become encampments. And I ask myself and I ask everybody that I run into. What's the answer to this? And this is one of those subjects that it's going to take a village for all of us to work on together. Mental health, sheriff, city, rural. We have to find an answer. And we need to do it now because it is growing. No reason to ask why, I guess it's here. But I'm thankful that you've asked and I'd be more than willing to help sit at a table to figure out what can we do?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That's me too. I'm, I don't know what I can do, but I think it's I think the question is going to come up of what can you do to do less to facilitate what is currently causing them to be here? And if we are in some way facilitating that wagon train of relocation, I'm more than happy to vote differently to not facilitate the, the transfer. So I'm, I'm more than willing to have the meeting, Commissioner Anderson.
I read the newspaper article from the city councils meeting and I'm of course more than willing to sit down and have a discussion. If you guys can get us, maybe your talking points and direction or questions, it sounds like from Commissioner Christopher, this rolls back to a lot of walk app and what they're currently doing. So if we can get some of those questions to walk app so that we're not blindsiding them when we meet with them, that would be great.
Yeah, I would agree. If you can send those questions to walk up so they're, they know what's going on. I also think that we as a county, I don't know how much of our county resource needs to participate in this meeting. I could think public health, mental health and senior services with mountainous transportation. If, but if there's something other than those three that somebody can think about. Yeah, let me know on that one. And then I'm assuming you would need to do it on a weeknight and not a weekday since your city council members probably all have jobs. So we need a coordinate between you and our clerk and find a, an evening that works for everybody.
That would be great. Yeah. The one thing we would need to do, I would need to work with your staff on getting a schedule together that works for everybody. And so we can get our proper notice on our side because when they get together, that's going to create a quorum and we're going to have to advertise for that.
Yep.
Like me.
Yep, yep. I agree, sir. And yeah, let's just have staff work with you and set up a good time and noticing and we can share our Zoom recording if you need to keep a copy and since I would assume we'd be do it here because we have more seating room for the general public, maybe downstairs. I don't know up here. We'll have that discussion. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. You guys have a great day.
You too, sir. That's all we have for miscellaneous reports. Thank you all for entertaining my topics today and we will move on to new topics. Oh, I guess I have one more topic. Uh, public records requests. Uh. The question would be checking the legality and checking with, um, other electeds in the room. Um, on the legality of charging a deposit. On the receipt of an ask for a public records request. Um, we currently get a lot of public records requests that ask for the request, and then when they're told they're charged, going to be charged. Once the documents are ready, uh, then they don't want to pick them up because they don't want to pay the dollar thirty seven or the two dollars and seventy eight cents. So staff spends. Fifty dollars of taxpayer money to create documents that somebody's refusing to pick up for a dollar and seventeen cents. Um, I think there. Some instances, they're requesting the document just to. Become a needle in the side of the county. They don't really want the documents. When they get the documents, they're not really looking at the documents. Um, they just don't want to have to pay for the documents in accordance with the county policy. Uh, even when we say, look, here's a stack that we already have printed. Uh, that I was just going to throw away, but you can have them for free, but if you want me to, if you want staff to scan all those so that you can have them electronically. We're going to have to charge you four dollars and seventeen cents. I don't want to pay four dollars and seventeen cents, but I'm also refusing to come pick up the paper copy. To the point where the public records request gets. It just expires and goes away after we've already done all the work. We have to put something in place to me that we are accepting deposits to do the records request. That way, if you don't pick up the copies. I honestly think that will get rid of a lot of these frivolous, time-consuming record requests. Now, whether we can accept deposits in each office, what does HR have a petty cash bin? Or do you just have to go to the audit? I know I said petty cash, sorry. Or do we tell people they need to go to the auditor's office and pay there? Whether this can legally be an issue, legal opinion. Before I wasted people's time, I wanted a second opinion on whether anybody even wanted to research this idea. Or is it a bad idea and we move on with status quo? Open discussion.
I think, uh, how staff has been doing these in the past, um, usually these are large, multi. Uh, ream record requests and what we do is we break them into chunks and say it'll be this long for this one. And this is going to be the expected cost on it, um, and you can, um, if we would like to ask for a deposit, um. I, but I think, um. Other jurisdictions do that in different areas, um. And that would be a change. We would need to change our policy in order to do that. Um. I guess the question would be is, is how many public records requests do we get that people don't pick them up? Or they don't have the, my, my goal is to not, um, try to limit transparency and access. Um, but also at the same time ensuring that, that staff's time is being used in the most adequate manner possible.
I, I agree with that, but I would say even if the person is being charged for the public records request per state law, that charge is so miniscule. That it is no way overburdening them with a dollar value. Uh, when they can get forty hours of the staff time and a stack of documents and it costs them three dollars and fifty cents. Um, this isn't about the money. Um, this is about being a needle in the side of government and the problem lies. Is those needles in the side of government are slowing down the process. Um. Of actually getting things fixed because our employees are spending all day. Creating documents that nobody's picking up and or nobody's reading. So it, I'm, I'm not in favor of charging somebody fifty bucks for a copy of something, nor can we do that by law. I mean, it's state statute. Uh, it is dirt cheap, but. If we charge them the deposit to begin with, we know they're actually going to pay for it versus right now, we tell them they have to pay for it, they tell us no. After we get the document prepared. Um, and then we, they wasted all of our time and they get to say, ha ha, and go home and here we are with documents on our desk. Um. And I believe. I don't believe we'll have a problem with legal opinion because I think that was a recommendation at some point to this board in the past, but we would need to go back and. Uh, ask that legal opinion. I think it was a recommendation before there just wasn't. I still don't have a yes to move forward, so, okay, we won't. Or are we?
I'd move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can move forward. All right, thank you. Um, that was the, oh, see, I thought that was the last of mine, but I have one more legal updates. Um, I would like concurrence from the board to try and reach out to the prosecutor and have him. Um, come over once a month. To provide us all legal updates on anything that's currently pending. So at least we can have a once a month update. Um, on what's and just, I don't know if that's whatever works for him, first week of the month, fourth week of the month. Um, whatever, I would like to reach out and try to get that.
I would love it.
No problem.
Can you reach out, chair?
Oh, I'm not reaching out, I'm having staff. I'll type it up for you and then I'll let you sit. Um, okay, that's all I had. Um, next item was Waters Conservancy Board, and I believe that's Mrs. Zoller, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, go.
So Water Conservancy Board, um, after Mister McClure retired. Uh, we were kind of in a void of who we were and where we were with. Water Conservancy Board, so we had to go on a learning curve and I came to, uh. A portion where I reached out to auditor treasurer to ask. How money is managed and that was just to make sure that we're covered and doing the right thing. Um, I did receive a report back, uh, from the auditor's office. Was that forwarded to the other commissioners?
I saw it a few days ago.
Okay, good, and, um. So I, I think we're making good progress there on that board, understanding who we are, where we are, how it functions, um. And I think they've been notified or had a copy of the money and how that transfers and where it needs to go, um. They've had a checking account and we're managing money, but it's my understanding that it needs to come through the treasurer's department. And we do have a line item for that money to be deposited in, is that correct?
I learned about this last Friday.
Okay. I'm going to let Heather do the update. Okay.
Figure it out, but yeah, I have a brief thought to the water.
Okay.
Done anything, but yes, I, I've read the.
Okay, and then, um, they do, uh. Need a board member, but, uh, because of pending applications and timeframe. Uh, they have a problem with two members that need updated education to be certified to vote. And ecology has assured me if they get those four hours of training or a, a second one, the eight hours of training. Uh, that there wouldn't be the need to appoint that they would have more than enough members at time with alternate, with a. Alternate member to be able to reach quorum and move forward. Uh, so that's where the county is with Conservancy.
Do you, does the auditor, do you have anything to present? To us today of your findings or your findings in the paper copy and you're good with that?
I don't have anything additional.
I'm just saying, if you're going to talk, I'm going to mouth to make you come to the microphone. If you don't want to talk, you can just stay there.
It's all in here unless you have a question.
Okay.
This was, I received that from ecology. I asked that last question about board members and where we were. I want to make.
Oh, right.
I want to make sure they had enough board members to move forward.
Right.
Go ahead, pass one to Jake.
Oh, sorry, didn't realize it was the same.
I can give you that at least for the file.
So there's only currently six people on the board.
No, there's currently five people on the board, one alternate. Right?
Correct.
So they need three of the trained people. To be a quorum, is that correct?
And the issue would be is that you have an application that comes in where two of them have to recuse themselves.
I, I understand that, but I guess I would also say that if the water board. Thinks that the people that need more training. Uh. Have given ample time to get it and are going to get it, then they need to come forward with recommendations to replace them with somebody who will get the training. Um.
And it looks like that application that they're discussing could be up to six months out. So there is time for that training to happen for those two if they choose to be responsible and move forward.
Well, that's the, that's kind of the kicker to me is they, that's, that's out of my control. If the water board wants to keep people who aren't trained, that's up to them. Um, if they want them removed and have another person to take their spot, all they got to do is ask. Um. So, okay, other than that, it looks like, um, we need to allow the treasurer time to read the documents. And somebody from the county needs to work with the water board on the financial parts of it to make sure that we're complying. Um, in all aspects.
Mister Chair, we have a hand raised by the Chair of the Water Conservancy Board.
I guess, um. I will try one more time. I've allowed you to speak twice, sir. Um, on both instances, you were disrespectful to this board. I will give you one more opportunity. Um, go ahead.
Need to come up.
Yep, you have to come to a microphone, unfortunately, otherwise I'll get comments online and. We need to have a standing mic in the back of the room. Thank you, sir, and tell everybody who you are, please.
Craig Stevens, uh, I'm the Chair of the Water Conservancy Board. Uh, the problem with the training is here a few years ago, ecology stopped having. Formal continuing education. Um. I don't know if it was COVID or what happened, or there was a person they had dedicated to training. Water Conservancy Boards, both the basic, um, forty hour to start with. And then the, uh, continuing education, eight hour per year.
Is this in-person training or is this like Zoom?
Well, it used to be all in person and with COVID, uh, now it's kind of a hybrid, you know. Sometimes they have it close enough, you can attend in person. But since they stopped doing that, we're pretty much on our own to go find training. Um, a lot of it is really expensive. You have to. Typically, it's law classes, continuing education. There was one just last month that was, I think it was seven hundred dollars. To attend even on a Zoom thing, and of course, they're during the day. Um, you know, and everyone have jobs and work, they're all volunteers. And it's hard to, like the two members that have continuing education, they're both farmers. And it's hard for them. Ecology has normally had their training in October, which is the busiest time for farmers. They're working eighteen, twenty hours a day, so. Just saying that they need to get their training, it's, it's, it's hard to push these guys. They're grown up adults and. You know, we.
Right.
We, we, we try and encourage them.
I, I'm just looking at that, and the reason I kind of said that was because the one only needs eight hours or one year. Um, the other one looks like he's three years behind.
Yeah.
You're, you're either going to do it in three years or you're not.
Right.
Um, but again, that's not up to me, it's up to you.
And if, as far as the money thing goes, um. We're all for the auditor taking that over. We tried to do that before, probably ten years ago. When Brenda Sorensen was here and she didn't want any part of it. She wanted us to keep a checkbook, so. That's what we did, but I'd just as soon fill out their AP paperwork and. Get the money out of our hands.
That's good.
Yeah, well.
Cause we're looking at it of the state audit and they're like, you're doing what?
Right.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't.
And we do our audit.
Actually.
Save us doing the audit, I think, every year.
So we need to figure that out and we'll have.
Yeah, I can work with the other.
Request that they figure out how they want to go through it.
Sure.
Just to keep us on the up and up.
Just because you use the county AP does not mean that you don't have to do the state audit. We have done the state audit every year. We have always passed the state audit every year. There's never been any issues, no.
How it works, so.
So.
I'm an electrician. So, not an auditor.
She came forward, she must have something.
I did, just to address those issues, yes, you would still have to file your annual report and be audited.
Okay.
We just basically serve as. Paper processors for you, and there is a third number according to this, who's, um. Eligibility expired August first of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I think you have to hold.
It was.
He, he, he got, yes.
Is that the top one that's on your list?
I, I think he has, he did it in later in August.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Right down to the wire.
We've had an updated email sent in the last three days. So, yeah. Okay.
It's possible.
What's that?
I said, so it's possible.
Yeah, yes, everything's possible.
Okay. Any other updates for this?
That's it for me unless Mister Stevens has.
But, uh, uh, again, our main problem now is coming up to the quorum like. Again, these are regular people with regular jobs volunteering for this. And we're not having a meeting tonight because we couldn't get a quorum. Uh, with Harvest and one of our members is sick, so. Uh, you, you know, it's just to keep in mind, the more voting members you have. The better your ability to carry out your business.
How long has it been since you reached out and, and looked for members, maybe?
That's something Dave did.
Okay.
Did all that.
Okay.
And what about publicly posting? Would it help if the county posted something on the internet or the? I hear you now in the back of the room, but. It's probably, we probably would be able to post for anyway, you're your own entity, you'd probably have to do the post.
Well, we use the, the natural resources website on the county website. To post our meetings and stuff right now because like last year.
You guys have a list of people that hold water rights in the county?
I've never seen it. Not that it doesn't exist, but. Like the one member, I think, that owes us eight or twenty-four hour crebs.
See, you keep mentioning names. I was going to mention names.
Oh, he, uh, he, I think his family has one of the largest water rights in Click-It-That counties.
I was just thinking if there was some list that you can send to everybody that, hey, we need your help kind of thing, but if you don't have a list, you don't have a list.
Right, yeah, typically it, well, first of all, you, I would have hoped that you appreciate the fact. How hard it is to get committed volunteers.
Which is surprising to me because these people that have these water rights that are worth. What water rights are worth, have the choice to either have a water board or go through ecology. You would think they would be doing everything they can to make sure they can keep it local and not have to go through a college.
I'm the unicorn because I'm, I'm not a farmer and I have water rights or anything, so.
But you'd also note that the vast majority of people who own a water right will never change their water.
True that. Uh, yeah, but the vast majority that don't have people that don't have a water right may never change. Or get rid of their water right, but I don't know that they would never try to acquire new or more. I mean, they just, I'm happy with my so many acre feet and I never want to upgrade.
The issue is trying to find water that's available to get, the reason most of our water right transfers that involve actual private. Individuals or companies, um, are water rights that are being transferred down from Upper Basin and they're in continuity with the Columbia River. A lot of the water right changes that we actually do go through, um, our municipalities. Uh, such as the PUD or the cities, and those are the water right changes or potentially the county.
There you go, you should sit on the waterboard.
I have, sir. I had to, I had to resign that when I took this role.
We lost another one.
Hey, anything else to add to your topic?
No, and I did forward the auditor's information to you. Do you have questions for her?
I, I don't, I.
Way more qualified than I am to.
Yeah, I think it's. I it doesn't matter to us either way. We still gotta fill out paperwork, you know, whether it's an AP or a check.
So.
Same thing does.
Having actually had to fill out the annual audit, it seems like to me it would make sense to do switch over January one. And switch everything over so that when you do your next audit, not not in May, but the one, the next one. Then when you're answering all those questions, you can answer those straight from, yes, we don't manage our own money. We use the treasurer and the auditor and all that. And it would probably be a lot cleaner for the audit. I would think through the state.
That's up to the.
As I say, it's not up to me. That that's up to all you people. You're your own entities.
Yeah, uh, I that sounds like a good plan, then I have would have all the information in front of me, but maybe it's the same. With AP, I don't I don't know anything too much about the AP.
Does the Water Conservancy Board currently have a treasurer? Who's managing the account?
I'm managing because I'm signatory on the account, but no treasurer.
Okay.
Dave McClure is the treasurer.
I know, after after I took this role, Dave assumed that as well.
Yeah, it went from you to him.
So I think letting Mister Gallagher catch up and then his advice is probably gonna be the last word.
Who's?
Greg.
Greg Gallagher.
Oh, Gallagher, I thought you said Bowder, and I'm like, Bowder. Yeah, okay. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Any other?
And thank you, guys.
Yeah. That on this?
Yeah, we we jumped ahead to. Skip a new business.
I did jump it because we were in all my issues. Uh, Mister Rob, you wanna come forward and talk about the Proffman contract?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I didn't bring a copy before me. I wanna thank Lisa for letting me add it on to the agenda as opposed to waiting another week. Uh, it's a standard contract with Proffman. We've used many times before. It's been approved by the PAS to form. Uh, the cost is the same as it's been in the past and it's pretty straightforward, so. Um, if you're inclined to approve it, we can work with him, get that posting up quickly.
I mean, yes.
Yes.
We need a motion.
It normally would have been on the consent agenda, so yes, sir, please.
Mister Chairman, we have before us uh an agreement um with Proffman and uh my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second with Proffman, for those that you don't know, is a. Organization that looks for employees and we're looking for a planning. And we have a motion and a second before us to approve the contract. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I can talk to Jen into Lori Anderson. My assumption is, though, that that money will be paid out of the Planning Department, probably out of the. One of their line items.
Or something. So, well, they have, maybe, I mean, they have money in there for professional services that if we don't have a planning director. That would then be hiring out for professional services. Maybe we use it for pro.
Okay, but we can work that detail out.
Thirty-five grand or something in there, so yeah, I think it covered.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mister Chair, I'd like to add under unfinished business, the natural resources application. I know we talked about it earlier, but. Maybe we should add that.
Yeah.
Yep, so you have two topics. You have the Army Corps and natural resources and you can do them if you want.
Okay, uh, we had before us uh something from the Department of Army asking to do. Cultural investigations along uh Clickatet County owned parcels. Um, I sent that to the uh Michael Shannon with HNTB, who is the owner's rep for. The Bay State Bridge Authority and um they have interacted with the Department of Army as well as all their internal people. Um, and uh they do not see any concerns with letting them do this work. So we looked at it both ways.
Um, for the crowd that seems very confused, we got a letter from, I believe it's Army Corps of Engineers. They wanna do cultural studies that they do on a regular basis. Along the Columbia River to make sure that they're not damaging cultural resources of this, that, or the other. And the county actually has some weird properties down there all the way throughout, including sandbars out in the middle of the river. Um, but one of the properties is right there on the Hood River Bridge. Um, so the discussion previously was. I don't really want anybody digging anything because if they dig something, they're gonna find an arrowhead and tell me I can't ever do anything with that property. So if you're not digging. You know, I'm safe. The argument was, we're gonna have to dig for the Hood River Bridge anyway, so why not let them dig? And maybe what they do can be attached to our SEPA for the bridge and allow us. Less money down the road because they did part. Um, so that's where he's coming from with Hood River. Anyway, that's a long story for the public who's in the room. Um, like I said before, I don't have a problem with approving it for that parcel that's next to the bridge. That we could see financial benefit from letting them do it. Um, but I am still opposed to all the other properties where the only thing, we have nothing to gain and everything to lose. Um, by letting them dig.
So the only other property that they are requesting is all underwater, so I don't know what they're gonna do.
There was, there was land. That's the one.
That's underwater.
Well, I think it's attached to the sandbar. I think it's that sandbar is bigger, but like that one.
That's out there in the middle of nowhere.
The one above it.
The one above it is the bridge parcel. This is the bridge.
Okay, there was another one somewhere. Well, yeah, but then like this parcel, there was another one over here.
Yeah, but they're they're only gonna be looking at the part that's within the ordinary high watermark for the Department of Army.
That's all I'm asking for, being spelled out in the contract is yes for this parcel number. Um, is the way I would recommend that we sign off that we are allowing you to do the inspection on parcel number, blah, blah, blah. Which is the Hood River person.
But these other two parcels are also gonna be used because when we build the Hood River Bridge, we're gonna have. Eighteen to thirty different barges out there that are gonna be all in this area, so. I would say you let them go on, you create that goodwill, you create to continue to create the goodwill between. Bridge Authority and the Army Corps because they have to agree to a whole bunch of our permits. Um, if staff is saying it's not an issue, who's professionals who builds bridges all over the world. Um, I wouldn't, I'd hate to say no and to start a. Disagreement with the Army Corps, who can make life miserable.
Well, and aren't you relocating the Inlu side? It's gonna stay there, okay. I don't have a problem.
You have two, give me enough to mull this over, you may get three. Said, I I I see the benefit of not pissing out the core engineers. I don't know that telling them no on some parcels would piss them off anyway. And I don't know that if they dig a hole, they're gonna find something and tell us we can't do anything with the property. Uh, we could just have to mitigate. Put it in the museum under some glass somewhere. Yeah, just to make sure it doesn't screw up the bridge project. Um, last thing I wanna do is be the guy that held up the bridge project. So, yeah, I'm I'm good. So I will reach out to them since they wanted my signature on it and I will have them wrap the document and I will let them let you all relook at the document. Before we sign.
The document's already drafted and in front of us.
So there it is.
Mister Chairman, we have before us uh an agreement between. Clickatet County and the Department of the Army, the US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, who are seeking temporary access to portions of our property to conduct some surveys. Um, it is my motion that uh we approve um this.
And I will second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm very hesitant, but I'm gonna be a yes.
Did we need a PA approval on that document?
Good tall. If I have, is that out of line? Any further discussion? Well, I'll start with the discussion. Um, I think we should amend or pull this motion or let it die a painful death. Uh, while we have the document sent to the prosecutor for legal review. Uh, and then uh take up this motion again. That's my discussion. Any other discuss?
Are you looking for legal review or reviews to form?
Well, they're both because reviews to form is by um Supreme Court. Um, not just looking at a document saying you spelled it correctly, but the county is not going to be held at liable or at risk or whatnot, so. I'm fine with reviews to form because it means much more than you dotted your eye.
I don't think so. Is that backwards?
Oh, you do your own research. Wow, he done my. I am very comfortable with reviews to form. We're, we're not just talking. Yeah, we're talking this um.
Jake, what was your question? Review as to form or review as to content? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the way Commissioner Christopher asked it was for legal review.
Okay. Review as to form, I think is very different than review as to content. Um, in my mind, he would be needing to look at the content of what they're asking us for.
I I agree with you. I just, I guess I would say based on my. Uh, legal findings when I researched this topic. Uh, a while back, I was very surprised at. My findings on court decisions on what review is to form actually means. And what attorneys that use refuse to form um are held liable in court. To what it means. Uh, and I walked away with a much. Comfortable or respectful reviews.
Well, uh, not calling you Matlock in this instance. Uh, but it sounds like there should be a PA opinion request on to the difference between reviews to form and legal review. Um, and I think we have before us a motion. Um, I have no issue with sending this back. It's not time sensitive in my understanding, so we can vote no on it and then make a motion and send it to the PA.
Um, I would agree, but other than the fact that I don't think we need to make a motion and send it to the PA, I think we just need concern. So would you be okay with sending it to the PA and asking for whatever terminology you want, legal review, whatever you find with me, I don't care. Wording the doc, wording the wording, however you two want the wording and then direct staff to email it. Okay.
Sure, we're in discussion. I think we need to take a vote and.
Well, let's, let's take a vote on the original motion. Uh, in the second, which is to approve the contract. Um, all those in favor of approval of the document that the army sent over and signing it, say aye. Hearing none, all is opposed, say nay, nay. I hear three nays, motion dies. Um, with that, it sounds like we need to send it for legal review and I don't. Care what wording you wanna put on it, so if either one of you wanna create said wording. And then give that wording to staff so she can attach it to the document. I just would like to know who's gonna do it before we move on to the next topic to make sure it gets done.
Sending an email to staff right now.
All right, done deal. Uh, Army update, good catch, by the way. I'm gonna commend you on the legal review one more time. Cause that was a good catch.
I was reminded by staff.
Cheater. I didn't think about it, to the truth, and that's my bad. Um, next item is natural resources. Mister Anderson, that was your topic.
Um, we have now had three applications um for the natural resources position. Um, I. Don't know if we're gonna get anymore, but I think we have two people who could potentially be qualified and. I think we can move forward um with interviews and I don't know, since we don't have a director in natural resources. Um, if we would like all three commissioners to interview or if we'd like one to interview, um. Just a discussion on which direction you'd like to go.
I'm very interested in sitting in on the interview.
So kind of the way we did it last time with all three of us, and if you wanna ask a question, ask a question, and if you just wanna sit there and watch, sit there and watch, that works for me. And um, do we need to be? Do we need to be clear on which two, or can we just each tell you privately which two, and if they all line up, then you know which two? If you need more guidance, you'll have to come back. Cause I don't want to eliminate one of the applicants in public by saying their name. I'm pretty sure we're all on the same page, too. I just don't wanna publicly name names. Um, okay, good enough. Um, next item is the FSEC appeal. Sure. Yeah. A lot, yeah. You're gonna go out there and talk to him now? Not about the date. Um, next item up is if we are moving on, looks like we are, FSEC appeal to the. Um, consistency ruling. Um, Ms. Zoller was going to reach out to FSEC and she had some legal questions to ask. I don't know if she's got her answers yet.
It's my understanding we have till the sixteenth and um. I have not received advice on my legal questions. Um. It's my understanding from past questions and work through the process. That. Sending a request to the PA for an appeal more than likely. Would not produce uh moving forward with that. Is there a way that as a board, we can make a decision to do that appeal and move forward? As is.
We can try this one. Um, I will step down as board chair and make a motion before this board to. Um, advise the prosecutor of this board's wish to appeal the consistency ruling from FSEC.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Um, any further discussion or any discussion? Hearing none.
No.
Up, hearing some.
Try, I'm trying to put my thoughts together on this. I think that if you would like to make a motion to appeal the FSEC consistency determination. If you want to have any possibility of success with the prosecuting attorney's office. You should probably be making a motion that has. Your findings or your reasons or rationale why. Um, that is the case.
Thank you.
Than just saying.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your opinion, but I do not believe in um fighting your legal case. Um, publicly uh in in displaying. And in displaying your FSEC. Your evidence to FSEC as opposed to, to the prosecutor. So.
I guess in, in order to, to vote on a motion to ask legal counsel to appeal something. To spend county resources and dollars to appeal something, we need to know. What the reasons or what you're actually appealing, what sections of the document you would like to appeal and why. That's not exposing anything. You're going to be appealing and it's all in the public interest. It's all in the public record. That doesn't make any sense. And then, and then that's something you can vote on. Just saying I'm appealing it because I don't like it. Isn't an actual appeal. It's not gonna go anywhere unless this is just political theater.
Sir, I'm gonna interrupt you there because now you're campaigning from your chair, calling it political theater and there's no meaning behind it and. I, I'm pretty sure I'll only speak for myself. I do believe it is appealable. I believe it is appealable on many fronts. In many errors that they made. It is not political in nature. I'm not grandstanding to the public. I believe it's easily appealable on many fronts and I'm just not going to get into those fronts publicly.
And I agree with Mr. Christopher and in my mind, uh, working with legal counsel. I believe. Us putting forward what we believe legally that appeal is. Is being your own attorney. I believe we need to ask that of our prosecutor at best advice and work that through with him. As you would with any legal counsel. If you even hired legal counsel, you work with them to move forward.
I would fully agree because that prosecutor and our legal counsel has fully advised us that he is willing and able. So I am going to take him at his word.
So the only thing then, if you don't want to have a conversation about it in public, wouldn't the proper procedure be to? If you are asking to file an appeal. Using a prosecutor would be to ask the prosecutor for. An executive session to have the discussion on what you, what you feel are the reasons. And rationale that you say your, the many points that are appealable so that. The prosecutor can know that to make an informed decision on whether or not to move forward. You, we have six days, which means we don't even have another Tuesday before the. Appeal would be due, correct, Commissioner Zoller?
Correct.
And.
So you're right, let's just not do it.
We do, we do have the seventeenth. And if we send over, in my mind, if we send over the request. On the seventeenth in executive session because it's. Legal in nature, we could have a sit down with the prosecutor and he could bring forward his. His best advice to this board on what he sees as the holes. In what's happened. Uh, and we could bring forward our discussions with him.
But I thought you said it's due the sixteenth.
I would advise you to not. Drink the Kool-Aid that's being delivered.
No, um, I'm not gonna call it that either. We're not gonna call things names today. So you just said, then let's not do it. What did you mean by that?
I was, I was. Trying to reiterate the argument that is being heard from my right. It is like you mentioned before, it's not our job to pick apart a document and find the legal holes in it. That is the attorney's job. If the attorney has questions for us, the attorney can reach out to us individually. They can look over the many. Citizen comments over the last year and a half that pokes holes. Into the consistency along with the E O Z that states that solar will be few and you know, there's many of things. They can. Poke at the state's documents that the state currently has. That. Points out how projects this close to populations of underprivileged. Is a bad idea. There's many things, including the moratorium and the legal standing of the moratorium. It isn't up to me to decide as an attorney, what is the best legal argument? It's just me up to the, asking the attorney. To make. His best legal argument.
So in that request, would you, we've gone over these things personally, I believe. Many, many times, many, many issues with those questions. Would you like to include what I consider my laundry list? But not limited to. And have him interject and maybe be able to help pick from that laundry list and then interject his. Ideas of.
If you have a laundry list that you would like to include, I will include it, but I would also say. That it would be my recommendation not to, and if he asks for your laundry list, then we provide it.
Okay.
I am not an attorney. I don't. Pretend to be one and. I don't want to provide a laundry list and in doing so, limit. What could be appealed because we failed to mention the big thing. They could have appealed on that in one, but they didn't mention it, so I'm not gonna mention it either. I would like to leave it to my willing and able and fully competent attorney. To be our attorney.
Yeah, because it would open a bigger discussion and we don't have time.
Well, there could be time. It's just not together. If he wanted to reach out to you and say, what are your reasons? You give them. He reaches out to me, says, what are your reasons? I give them.
But even if he does not get those conversations from us, I want to encourage him to move forward to do it. As the request to the board.
Did, did you get a chance to meet with the prosecuting attorney and talk about this? So, okay, so you never did, because I thought that's what, what you were doing and you were moving.
Been able to come up with it.
Yes, that, I thought that was the kicker. You were gonna call FSEC to find out when is the absolute last day and confirm it's the sixteenth. And then last, we heard last week, every FSEC never got back to you. And then you've been trying to meet with prosecutor for two weeks and that hasn't been able to get handled.
Been, not been able to happen. I do know the date, but I have not had a time with the prosecutor. So with time of the essence, uh, I think just moving forward with the request. Of the board that we need to be, we need to stand up for this.
I agree. Okay, any further discussion?
I would just like to say that I have had conversations with the prosecuting attorney. I've also had conversations with. Our outgoing planning director with regards to the consistency determination. And I've also read the documents and from everything that I have seen. The one place in Washington State that is likely most consistent is in Click Attack County. So asking for the appeal, I don't, I don't see. Unless this board comes forward and with your laundry list of reasons and rationale and it's put in front of me, how I can vote for that. Um, just saying we want to appeal it because we don't like it. Um, without that in front. Laid out is not the, the proper procedure, I would say.
Fully aware that you're opposed. You've been opposed since day one. We get you're opposed. I, I get it. So I would also say that are you saying that a moratorium? Has no legal foundation in that this county made a moratorium, but you don't want to try to defend the moratorium. So you're gonna vote no on this because you don't want to defend. The definition of a moratorium.
No, I would, I would, I would mention that all the way back to January third. My statements was always that a moratorium will not be found to be consistent. With, uh, the land use determination based on the available court cases that FSEC did mention in their document. So. I'm still standing by what I said, January third on that the moratorium is not the appropriate. According to their interpretation and how they've been interpreting their own laws that they have to deal with in front of a. Law judge. That that's still the case. Um, so no, I would, I would disagree with you, sir, that. In that respect. But I, I do, I would of course love to see the long laundry list of reasons and what you have. Commissioners all are because I think that is how we actually make the decision and determination to move forward with an appeal or not.
And I'm actually going to, I've asked and I'm actually gonna re. Rely on my prosecutor, on my legal counsel for that. To bring that forward and get that to FSEC by the sixteenth for us as a BOCC.
We, we asked, I'm sorry.
In the bigger picture of this. I represent was, uh, elected and represent the entire population of Click Attack County, not just a narrow view. And I want to make sure everybody's rights are covered under this. I believe there are appealable items and I believe we need to stand up for the entire population of Click Attack.
Any further discussion on that? Hey, we have a motion and a second before us to advise.
Last discussion. So we're asking the prosecutor to. Uh, appeal this. If a week goes by and we don't hear anything, are we also asking for if the prosecutor chooses to not appeal it? For something in writing that is rationale why? I mean, it doesn't sound like, if we don't have.
So what you're saying is ask the prosecutor to appeal it, but if he doesn't want to, give us the reason why you don't want.
Right.
Oh, so that gives him a way out of appeal. Perfect, Jake. That's exactly.
But the BOCC has the choice of the litigation.
No, we, I, I, that is not the motion before us. That is Jake's motion. That would throw a loophole in.
I'm not trying to throw.
It would allow the prosecutor not to appeal. That's Jake's motion. Throw this little loophole in there that will allow the prosecutor to not appeal because. And that's what I'm saying. I'm done with the conversation. We have a motion before us.
So you are, so what your motion then is doing is directing the prosecutor to appeal.
Correct. We have a motion in a second. Any, any further discussion?
Can we honestly direct the prosecutor to appeal on our behalf?
Yes.
I'm not gonna get into more further debate with you, sir. You have time to have. The mic, go ahead and let me know when you're done.
I was. Just saying that I. I believe according to the state and you know, the.
Your legal opinion, yes, go ahead.
That we can, we can ask another elected to appeal, but I don't believe we can require them to appeal. Because they have their own. Standards of conduct. They are an attorney. They, I mean, we can't direct.
Then he can answer us with them.
Well, that's why I was trying to add in there. If he chooses not to, I would like to know why. I'm not trying to. Railroad it. I'm trying to say if he chooses not to, I would like to know why.
Well, I would assume like any attorney. Hired counsel, he would reply to that. He wouldn't just ignore us, but he'd send us back our answer and reply to that.
And I'm going to.
I'm not gonna ask him for that, but that's his obligation to reply.
I'm not gonna stipulate and throw a bunch of what ifs out there that may never happen. If he chooses to not appeal. Maybe he does tell you why, maybe he doesn't tell you why, maybe a judge. On another case. Can determine why and whether he had the legality to tell us no. We'll, we'll find out eventually. Uh, but that has no bearing on us directing our council that the county would like to appeal a decision. So this county, if we pass this. Is choosing to direct its council to appeal a land use consistency ruling. Whether counsel chooses. To take that direction or not is a whole nother matter and I'm not getting into the debate on that. Any further discussion?
I'd just say that. Usually all of this discussion would be held in executive session because we are in essence. Trying to enter into a lawsuit.
But yeah, you're the one that wants to have all the discussion public with all of our reasons why.
We don't, are we trying to get, I mean, we need to. In order to direct staff of the council to do something, usually you would have a conversation with them about these are our reasons why. I mean. Is it, is, is it administrative appeal? What kind of appeal does, are we having the mass to appeal? Is it an appeal to Superior Court Judge? Is it an appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board? Who are we appealing this to?
Again, let me know when you're done with discussion, sir. I want to give you all the adequate time you need.
I, I've done, I. Am lost as to this process.
With that, I'm hearing no further discussion. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to direct the county's council. To appeal the FSEC decision. On the ruling of consistency. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The eyes have it. Anything else on our list besides board pending for anything that we forgot to mention? January first can't come soon enough. I can sit over there. It'll be fun. You can have it now.
Say something, man, that's.
You want it now? I'll give it up. I'll trade seats with you.
You've said that kind of stuff. That's a baby's rich.
Uh, do we have anything else to talk about other than the papers before us to sign? How do you guys feel looking at the application for natural resources? Did you feel? Really good or kind of good or good on one and not good on the other? Or was it just mediocre? Do we, you have more natural resources than me? Oh, pretty good with one?
I'm interested in hearing from both the people and listening to them. I think. What we, what we advertise for is not necessarily what we're definitely probably needing and asking for. And I think what we need. Is. High level. Natural resources background that can. Write. And. Fight for the citizens of this county and the private property rights of this county.
HR camera running. Alright, with that, our meeting is now. What would you like, man? I was joking because I saw you running down the hall to get yourself in here. Oh, we weren't naming names. Does that matter? Yeah, no, there was definitely not naming of names.
Thank you for the reprimand. Say something else, make her run back.
Alright.
Let her get down the hallway.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm having, uh, nothing else before us. I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, noticing that we will be in here at eleven AM Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, which is tomorrow. For a scheduled workshop with the, uh, Skamania County Board of County Commissioners. Note, we will note that the public is welcome to attend the workshops, but they will not be recorded in Zoom as not.
And there will be no public comment.
And there will be no public.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion. Off topic, but it is something I just remembered before we close session. Mr. Anderson, you'll need to check with Mrs. Zoller or she can tell you right now because it's sounding like she might be in Olympia. For the case Pita meeting next week. So do you want to clarify that now or off the record?
I'm registered for the planning one oh one.
Next week, we have the six-year road hearing at six PM.
Oh, the twenty-four, sorry.
Oh, the twenty-fourth.
I have to travel that evening to be in Olympia for the next two days.
Okay, um, and you will be unavailable on the twenty-fourth? Well, it sounds like.
Yep, lucky you. You were doing that anyway. I just was gonna tell you, there's only gonna be one of you there.
Well, good thing the case of Peter board is much larger than just the three of us.
Some might.
I don't, I don't like speed driving, but I could.
Speed driving?
I could drive early morning to Olympia. They don't start session till ten. I was gonna go partway up.
You will get another chance to. You will get another chance to vote on everything they do because they will
Leave anybody hanging.
Make their advice and then Richard will come to us with the advice on, it sounds like the two items are the Centerville Grange request.
Okay.
And the um, port request, sounds like we'll be dealing to.
I'm a turtle and so I go partway and then I go to Olympia in the morning. I stay with family.
You should be able to call in on the Zoom and at least listen to it on your drive up. You may not be able to talk.
More important, you were planning to drive up Tuesday morning?
Tuesday night.
Oh, Tuesday night. Okay.
After session, I'll leave.
Got it. Okay.
And that's me. So that day, let's make a note of it. We need to make sure we end it at least an hour on the twenty-fourth.
What time do you have?
Uh, because worst case scenario, I need out of here about three o'clock. So I would prefer two thirty even.
Okay, I'm good with that.
On the twenty-fourth. That gives us drive time because I need to be where I need to be by five thirty and it's red.
So we're starting early.
Okay, well, good enough.
Well, then at least all the business should be done in the morning anyways. Okay, Chair, there is a motion and a second on.
There is. I just want to make sure there was no more discussion of these last one of the things that pop up the minute we adjourn. Um, with that, we have a motion and a second to adjourn until tomorrow at eleven A M in this room. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for attending.